We're on.
Township of Precipity Troy Hills, regular township council meeting at December 16th, 2014.
Adequate notice to this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by filing the notice in the office of the Township Clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the municipal building on January 8, 2015, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared on both the daily record on January 12, 2015, and was quoted by fax on the local newspapers and local radio stations on January 8, 2015. Note council meetings are videotaped and aired on Cablevision, public access channel 21, at 11 o'clock a.m. on Sundays, and are also available for viewing at www.precipity.net.
Please rise for the flag salute. Actually, Coach, if you could lead us.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Here.
Mr. Peluso?
Present.
Mr. Stanton?
Here.
Mr. Valori?
Here.
Council President Karifi?
Here.
Also present: Mayor James R. Barberio, L&amp;M Sandman Business Administrator, Paula Cosarelli, Assistant Business Administrator, Justin Marchetta, Township Attorney, Yancy Wazermas, Township Clerk, Ann M. Coochie, CFO. At this time, I'd also like to announce that Senator Joseph Pinaggio is here tonight with us. Thank you for coming. Upcoming meetings: February 10th, 2015, at 7:30 p.m., Agenda meeting; February 24th, 2015, at 7:30 p.m., Regular Meeting. At this time, we'll have some presentations. First up will be the mayor, Mayor Barberio.
Back in December, I met Carla. She came into my office with her grandmother, of course, who I know very well, and I have a proclamation I'm going to read. I was very impressed with all your accomplishments. So, "The Township of Precipity Troy Hills Proclamation. Whereas Carla Marie King was crowned 2014/2015 Royal International Miss National Junior Teen on July 12, 2014, and whereas Miss National Junior Teen, excuse me, optimizes the finest traditions of our state and nation through talent, charm, and beauty, and whereas Carla Marie King tirelessly promotes the importance of community service and serves as an outstanding role model to her peers and the citizens of Precipity Troy Hills, whereas Carla Marie King has passionately joined the fight against bullying by walking the runway for fashion against bullying and has collected and donated thousands of dollars to various charities, and whereas Carla Marie King has been actively spreading her message across the USA, her completion of more than 100 hours of volunteer work annually earned her the Presidential Volunteer Service Award. Now therefore, I, James R. Barberio, the mayor of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills, do hereby commend Carla Marie King for serving as a positive role model and for her continual altruistic efforts in representing the state of New Jersey with great appreciation and respect. I extend best wishes for all future endeavors dated this 13th day of January 2015." For all your accomplishments, I also have a key to the city. Now, you get a key to the city. You're Coach Albano now. Coach Albano, would you please come forward? Should've had you as a coach when I was in high school. Well, the Cowboys didn't have you. Now, Coach, I have to wear the hat. But before I read this proclamation... Buddy, come on. You're a taxpayer too, so that's a good thing. I have to tell you, as a Precipity Hills graduate in the class of '79, when I played football, we were on a, well, we were a big team, much bigger than the team here, but we just couldn't, uh, I'm not going to get to the west, the east, the Orange game, but I had no choice but to bring this out. That's our team picture from 1979. And guess which one I am? No, you don't. Fifty-one, there you go. And, um, that's the picture here. Come on, Coach, get in there. I can yell at you, because I know you yell at the kids.
Not me.
No, I know you don't.
Not me.
Also, I had to save these tickets. These are going to always be in my office. These are the tickets to the winning state championship game. So, I want to thank you for that. I'd love you to give me the tickets, they were free. Oh, yeah, this was the one I, my wife and I were waving around that night, that day, because I was raising your taxes if you lost. And I got to tell you, this is one of the great moments, the Mordecai. That's going to be framed. That was a great day. The day, my wife, she was crying, you know, and I said, Brenda, you went to Precipity High School. Why would you cry? You know what she said to me? "I'm looking at this through your eyes." And it's, and you know what? I have to tell you, Coach, I've known you for many years now, and, and, you know, and I've been blessed, Mike Peterowitz, who's the president of the Little Vikings, John Mucciolo, the Boosters, Chris Joyce, during all your games, these guys always updated me what the score was. Now, I'm going to get to the Orange game. I get to the Orange game, and you guys are losing. And when I get there, the first thing I see is a Verizon cell tower, but it was actually one of the kids on the other team. These kids were so big. I said, "How is Precipity Hills going to beat these guys? You will lose them." And it seemed like, it seemed like, it looked like, to my, in my opinion at that time, I said, "Nah, I got faith in them," but then I saw something in that game. I watched, I saw the heart of every one of those players. I could not believe, they outflanked them, they outs, you had the speed, I couldn't believe it. And I said, "Hey, listen, we're going to win this game." You guys came back, you tied it, and then you took the lead. And then, of course, we get to the cardiac version of the game, the last, the last play. I have to tell you, you guys were amazing, totally amazing. I said, "When you beat Orange," I said, "They can win the states." There's no doubt about it, because that was a big team. And then I found out that some of these kids were, um, got scholarships to other colleges, and that's how good they were. I missed the Summit game, which I really wanted to be at, because I really wanted you to beat Summit, because prior on Facebook with the mayor of Summit, it didn't turn out good for me one year, but it turned out good this year. But let's get to Cranford. When I saw Cranford on the field, I said, "We're going to win, I think we can win this game." I really do, not that I'm, I'm not a coach by any means, but... Yeah, it was my gut feeling, but I've never seen a coach pace as much as you did that game. And the reason why I watched you is because I know how important it was to you, how important it was, not just for the kids, how important it was for the Township of Precipity Troy Hills. The excitement was amazing. I got to meet so many of my, my graduates from 1979 were there. I got so many Facebook messages. Our quarterback, Jimmy King, kept saying, "What's going on? What's going on?" I said, "They got further than we ever got." But, it was a play in that game, or there were several plays in that game. Your running back, um, I can never say, yeah, amazing running, but there was a, that last, that last drive, and I said this at the dinner, that last drive, when you guys, when Cranford was coming down, me being a Giants fan, I saw memories of 1970s with the Cowboys, always coming down for that last drive to kill you, but it didn't happen. You guys stepped up, and the last play of the game, I was so intense that I jumped up, I told you the story, I hit my kneecap, went back down, my wife wanted to hug me, and I wasn't nowhere to be found. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for, um, let me just tell you this, thank you so much, because you guys played such excellent football. Sportsmanship was amazing, and to watch you guys win it, and the way you won it, against a team that averaged close to 40 points a game, that had speed, just like you had, but you had one thing more, you had determination, you had drive. So, as the mayor of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills, I'm going to thank you for what you've done for the township and for lifting up the spirits, and I got to live my dream through, through, through your success. So, thank you. Ready, Coach? "The Township of Precipity Troy Hills Proclamation. Whereas Precipity is a township filled with excitement and spirit, because the Precipity Hills High School varsity football team has an outstanding 2014 season and has captured the NJSIAA North Two Group Three State Championship. And whereas, for the first time in Precipity Hills High School history, the Precipity Hills High School varsity football team won a state championship by defeating Cranford 20-13 on December 7, 2014, at MetLife Stadium, and holding them to 27 points below their season average. And whereas, in the semifinals, the last time Summit was shut out was in 2008, until they faced the fearless Vikings of 2014. And whereas, the recognition and celebration of our championship team serves to bring our community together in honoring our students and their coaches for a phenomenal football season resulting in an outstanding 10-2 record, an average of more than 30 points per game, with 3,970 total offensive yards. And whereas, by achieving outstanding success in the athletic competition, the Precipity Hills High School Vikings were selected 2014 Daily Record Team of the Year. And if I may add, Coach Albano was named Coach of the Year in the USA Today." Whereas, these achievements cannot have been reached without the leadership of the coaches and the encouragement of the players, parents, who together instilled in them the value of teamwork, imparting them to a desire for success, and helped them to develop a sense of fair play and competition. Now therefore, I, James R. Barberio, the mayor of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills, do hereby proclaim, January 13, 2015, as Precipity Hills High School's Viking Varsity Football Team Day, and hereby extend our expression of pride to the team on their impressive record and many successes in 2014. I further encourage all Precipity citizens to acknowledge the historic achievement made by the Precipity Hills High School Vikings and thank them for representing Precipity as well as the highest ideals of high school football program. I couldn't get a lot of keys to the city from you guys, but this will be hanging up on your trophy case, I hope. This is a key to the city, and the only time we have access to it is when we need to speak to residents in August, which is the taxes.
On behalf of the entire Viking football community, we have a little gift for you. We have our championship shirts. This one will be for you.
Oh, small, beautiful.
And then this is special, again, as we get older, you know, we have to live through our players, and, and we have a sweatshirt with Coach's name on it, and I did remember your number.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate it.
Thank you for everything.
It means a lot, no, thank you for everything. Ladies and gentlemen, let's give them a round of applause once again, thank you.
Coach, Coach, don't go anywhere, don't go anywhere.
We're all going up?
Yeah, you should all go up.
I'd just like to say that, um, the entire council is very proud of you guys. I too was a graduate of Precipity Hills in 1984. Uh, I played football there as well, and, uh, we had a pretty good team, actually. We were 7-1-1 my senior year, but nothing we did could compare to what you guys have done, and, and that is amazing. I could tell you that when, I was at that football game too, and when Cranford came out, you know, I said the same thing. I saw some of those linemen, and some of those guys were huge. But the thing was, you know what? Not only did you guys have the determination, you had the heart, and when you have the heart, that will overcome any size, any day. And I'll tell you, and that was a great job. I was sitting there with a guy that I graduated high school with, we played football together, and we both said the same thing when you guys came running onto the field. Saw Mr. Peterowitz going nuts when he came out there, riling you guys up, and, and we just knew that it was going to happen that day. Um, and two, some of the guys that I played football with, you know, they were reaching out to me, keep me posted, let me know what's going on. I'm trying to post things on the computer to let everybody know, because, you know what? Once you're a Viking, you're always a Viking, and all us football players, we're all together. Even 20, 30 years from now, you guys will come back and watch a game, and you'll know what I mean. Hopefully, we'll have some more things, more accomplishments like you guys. All right. Township of Precipity Troy Hills Outstanding Achievement Award presented to Precipity Hills High School Vikings in recognition of winning NJSIAA North Two Group Three State Championship. We extend our congratulations to you for this outstanding achievement and for the pride you have brought to your school, your teachers, your coaches, your family, and the community in which you live. Again, thank you and congratulations. All right, we, we just found out we actually scrimmaged each other in high school. And actually, we won. He just admitted it.
If I could just add on, I was at the game, and it was cold. And even though I was rooting for you guys, after the first quarter, I'm saying, "There's got to be a better way to watch this game." I was sitting with the mayor and his wife, Brenda. So after the first quarter, I wandered around, and I found a nice warm room with a big-picture window and a playback screen, and I got a front row seat. And then I'm sitting there, nice and comfortable, watching the rest of the game, and I'm thinking, gee, you know, maybe I should go down and tell the mayor and Brenda about this nice warm room. But then I was afraid, if I, if I got up, I was going to lose my seat, I might even lose the room, you know, so I, I let them sit there in the cold, enjoy the game from where they were. They had good spectator seats, so I didn't want to disturb them. Uh, just for your information, um, now, my kids graduated, uh, my son in '79, when they went to the States against Philsburg, and my daughter's in the early eighties. And they have, uh, multi-grade, multi-class reunions at Town Tavern at least once a year. They, they try, they go back even more often now, they, all these multi-classes all go back. And I just want you to know, they were all rooting for you. Precipity High School kids, families, and alumni were rooting for you too, which remind us that we are one town. Congratulations. Start with the Pinaggio, right? You'd like to?
I apologize, Assemblywoman, Assemblywoman DeCros, was supposed to be here and give it out, because she does live in Precipity, so that's the bad news. The good news is you have me, and I didn't come prepared for a speech, but I do want to share this with you, Coach. Council President Karifi had mentioned, I think, 30 or 35 years ago, 40, 45 years ago, I remember playing ball, and the lessons that I learned playing football, the lessons that your coach instilled on you, because he probably said exactly the same things to you that my coach is saying to us, you will never forget them. The relationships that you made this year and going forward with the friends that you have to the left and the right, and front and back of you, you will never forget them. Nothing in my life, up until that point, has appeared to me more going forward in my life than football. It gave me discipline, it allowed me to wipe my brother's back, it showed me what teamwork could do, and it's a metaphor for life. If you put the effort in, you're going to get the effort out. Forty, 45 years from now, I'll be pushing daisies, but one, two, or more of you will be up here hopefully giving Precipity High School another proclamation and thanking them, maybe as a state senator, maybe as a governor, for all the hard work and all the efforts that you've put in. The ones that really deserve credit, guys, it's not you, it's your coaches, and it's your parents, because they had to put up the... God bless you all, congratulations. I will not read the who asses and who doesn't. Congratulations.
Most important, let's get the team up here.
Yeah.
Come on, guys.
Maybe they should have went down there.
You're cold?
Yeah, finally.
Outstanding. Guys are all bigger than us.
I thought you looked like it.
Guys in the back.
Congratulations, Coach.
Good job, guys. Good job.
Hey, guy. Peterowitz. Okay, at this time, I'd also just like to thank some of our, uh, local businesses that also... that also, uh, were very supportive of our football team. IHOP Restaurant, Fuddruckers, and Applebee's, our local merchants, so just like to thank them for supporting our football team. Okay, at this time, we're going to take a five-minute break. Uh, this way, the guys from the football team, if you want to head out, unless you want to stay with us for the rest of the meeting, um, you can head out. I know there's some refreshments out in the hallway for you guys, so feel free. Yeah, be advised, those, uh, refreshments are going to be, they're sponsored by Precipity Focus.
Okay, good.
Entertaining motion to reconvene?
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. Peluso, seconded by Mr. Stanton. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Peluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes. Okay, at this time, we'll have a presentation on Glenmont Commons Development by Earl Schneider.
Uh, Council President, before we kick off our presentation, um, I just really want to summarize the whole background to, uh, this report and how it came to become a reality. First and foremost, I'd like to thank the mayor for his continued commitment to responsive government. Uh, Mayor Barberio gave me the latitude in my position when I first came on in October 1st of 2012, uh, to take on this issue that was brought to my attention. I think I started getting emails from some of these folks up front somewhere around June or July of 2013. However, there were many phone calls prior to that, which is perfectly fine. The other person that I'd like to recognize that's here tonight is Kevin Ryan. He is the superintendent of our water utility. Kevin, uh, took the lead with his proactive management style in quickly engaging his staff and informing them of the emergent needs of the Glenmont residents. Kevin started being very proactive, of course, along the way, however, in 2011, water department personnel recognized that there was no down use after the summer use. Typically, what you will see in our SCADA system, that there'll be a decrease, um, after the summer in water use. And what that told the water department is that something is happening in Glenmont, and what they were doing at that time is they were ganging and listening to active water leaks to figure out and, and let and inform residents, "By the way, you're having, uh, more than, higher than average water use, there's something going on on your property." Alerting residents before anything could happen, "Please check into your private water line, we're seeing, uh, unusual, uh, activity in that area." The other thing that the water department has engaged and continues to engage in is being available to our Glenmont residents 24/7. Uh, anytime there is a Glenmont call, our water department personnel are ready to go and assist these residents. This report also was done through a tremendous amount of research, collecting data. Uh, that is something that the water department helped myself out, the administration, as well as the, uh, building and construction people, as well as our plumbing subcode inspector. And I'm sure, uh, this Glenmont development did not only affect our condo association, but it also affected our singly, single-family homes. However, uh, it appears as though, as, as a matter of fact, not even appears, it is the truth, that most of the failures seem to be concentrating in the condo association area. Uh, I'd like to thank Nancy Di Eduardo publicly. Uh, she was a very strong advocate for, uh, most of you sitting here, uh, wanting to get to the root cause of the problem. So, you know, uh, I, I thank Nancy for her tenacity in wanting to do that. And, uh, lastly, I just would like to introduce Earl Schneider. Earl Schneider is an engineer, he's a professional engineer with over 25 years' experience in water supply and design. Between myself, Earl, the administration, uh, you know, the water department, all of these other folks, uh, we gathered our data and, um, we put together a report, Earl put together a report, uh, that I believe is very comprehensive and, and one that, uh, one that actually summarizes what Earl was engaged to do by this township. So, uh, I would just like to introduce Earl Schneider to come up, and, and he's going to give a, a, uh, brief summary of the report and the highlights of that report. Thank you, Earl.
Just please make sure you use the mic.
Use the mic.
You can just take it out of there.
You can take it out.
You can take it out.
Take it right, right off.
Thanks for having me, Mayor and Council, Earl Schneider, and, uh, like Paula said, I was asked to help out in trying to figure out what was going on in the Glenmont Commons Development. So basically, a quick overview is there's about 400 residences up there, and there's, since 2011, there's been 74 failures of the water service lines. These water service lines are, uh, a polyethylene plastic, uh, one-inch diameter, and they run from the curb, um, of the residence across the yard and in, into, into the, uh, the basement of the buildings. And, uh, you know, 19% of these have failed. So, I was asked to come in and look at the types of failures, um, of the pipe and the potential causes of the failures. So, the first thing, you know, we can talk about is the pipe itself. This pipe is a polyethylene pipe, it's rated for 200 PSI working pressure. If you were to take it to a laboratory and put it in a machine and pump it up and test it, it's gonna burst at about 600 PSI. So, the pipe is suitable for the application it was used for. The pipe is also acceptable by the plumbing code. So, the pipe itself, you know, the product, was suitable for what it was, its intended use. Now, the types of failures that we saw, there were 74 failures, but we were only able to grab a small sample of those. A lot of the folks who had their pipe replaced, what they did is they had a contractor come and pull another smaller diameter copper pipe through the plastic pipe, and that way they, they didn't have to excavate, and it reduced the expense. But we also didn't get a lot of good information from some of those, from some of those residences. But for the ones we found, we did find punctures in the pipe, and we also found small splits, longitudinal splits, running along the length of the pipe. Now, the punctures, when you see punctures in pipe, it seems that this is probably a poor installation. Now, if you look around at some of the pictures here, these are pictures of the materials that were pulled out of the hole, holes where we did exhume some of this pipe. And you can see, there were big pieces of rock lying against the pipe itself, impinging on the pipe. The manufacturer recommendation for a pipe like this is that it's totally encased in sand, and that protects the pipe from these large, you know, fragments of rock. What happens over time, you know, everything settles a little bit, and that creates stresses, and some of these stresses create punctures in the pipe. So, that's one apparent problem in the installation. Another problem we found was that some of the samples we took were sent to Dow Chemical. Now, the pipe is produced by NDOT Industries. They're the supplier of the pipe. But Dow Chemical manufactures the resin that is then extruded by NDOT to make the pipe. We sent the pipe to Dow Chemical, and they brought it into the lab and did certain of these tests. And the pipe should fail one of two ways. Well, the way it should fail is, it would be called a ductile failure. And that means the pipe has some, like elasticity to it, and when it fails, what happens at the point of failure, the pipe will actually create, like they call it a bird's beak, and it will kind of bubble up and then it'll pop. That's a ductile failure. That's a properly manufactured pipe. They found, however, that some of these pipes had brittle failures, and that are these, more of these small splits. So, in correspondence with Dow Chemical, they said admittedly, there might have been some issue in the manufacturer or the extrusion of the pipe. Now, there's still, NDOT is, NDOT is on record, and Dow Chemical's on record, having discussed this with the township and myself. But we haven't quite got all the answers from them. It's still something that we're discussing with them. So, in summary, you know, you have, you have a situation where you have a condo, or a nice, you know, nice homes built up on a hillside. Because of that reason, you are gonna experience greater changes in pressure than if the water system was built down, you know, here in more of the level area. So, you do create some higher pressures in the system. But, you know, my review of pressures in the water system in the township is, these high pressures do occur in quite a few locations throughout the town, typical of Morris County and areas around here. So, that was the pressure. The pipe was suitable. The installation procedures were lacking, obviously lacking. And Dow Chemical and NDOT have looked at some of this pipe, and they have indicated that some of the pipe may had, had some manufacturing problems. So, that is basically a summary of what I found. Thank you.
Questions?
Thank you, Mr. Council President. I've been asked to address some of the questions that have been raised previously by some of the residents and some of the legal issues that arise in connection with this matter. We prepared an opinion letter that's dated today to the governing body, but I have no problem in making that available to the public, either tonight or through an Oprah request, we'll make it available. One question that has been raised is whether, well, let me deal with this one first. Under the township code, folks, owners of private property that are serviced by township water are responsible for all fees and other charges in connection with the installation, repair, and testing of any water meter, water service, water connections. And that's what this would be, is the water connection. It's the pipe that is on private property. Township is responsible to the curb. The private property owner is responsible from the curb to the house. In this particular instance, I understand from speaking with the association's attorney that the association, under the association documents, and I haven't, have not reviewed them, but the association's attorney has reviewed them, and he tells me that it's not an association responsibility, and in fact, the association really doesn't have any interest in those pipes because they're on private property. And frankly, the same thing applies, the same concept applies to township. So, we start with the township code, and I'm looking at Section 420-2B, which specifically says that the owners of private property are responsible for the water connections. So, we start there. We then look to the question of whether or not, if the township wanted to, as a policy matter, be of financial assistance to you. Could the township legally be of financial assistance to you? And under the New Jersey State Constitution, it's Article 8, Section 3, Paragraph 3, governmental entity is prohibited from giving private property, lending money, or extending credit to a private entity for private use. So, constitutionally, legally, the township is not able to expend public money to benefit a purely private individual. You can use certainly public money to benefit private entities for a public purpose, but there's no public purpose here because the ownership of the pipe is with the property owner. The responsibility for the pipe is with the property owner. So, there isn't a public interest or public purpose. It's your pipe. It's your house. It's your, it's your responsibility, and there's a legal impediment to the township, you know, providing you with financial assistance in that regard. The other issue that was raised was an issue as to whether or not the township could be liable for failing to inspect or negligently inspecting the property as it was built. As the pictures indicate, it appears as though perhaps a case could be made for a bunch of negligence, including negligence of the inspector, arguably, some would say, you know, should have seen this fill being put in next to the pipes and should have done something about it and didn't, and shouldn't the township be liable? And the answer to that is clearly no. Clearly no. The New Jersey State Legislature, under the Torque Claims Act, has made a public policy determination that a municipality or public entity is not liable for injury caused by its failure to make an inspection or by reason of making an inadequate or negligent inspection of any property. And I'm quoting from NJSA 59:2-6. And there are a series of cases that have considered factual scenarios very, very similar to this in the context of the statutory language that I've just read to you. And I will, I will cite them. Gary v. Payne, 224 NJ Super, 729, which is a New Jersey State appellate division case, 1988. Pankowski v. Township of Montclair, 299 NJ Super, 557 appellate division, 1997. And the Pankowski case is very close to the factual case here. And in that case, there was an allegation of a failure by the township to inspect water service pipe inspections in connection with the builders, with the developer's building permit, whether that was immunized by statute and the court said yes. So, the legislature, again, has made a public policy determination that even if there is negligence in the inspection, that the town cannot be liable. And the rationale for that is that, you know, the taxpayers could be on the hook for, you know, enormous sums of money if there weren't limitations placed on liability against municipal entities, even for negligence committed by their employees. And that's, that's just the law. That's where the legislature drew the line. And again, there are cases, plethora of cases, that interpret that statute. And so, I'm confident in opining that the township does not have liability. So, you know, our opinion is, is that we are not able to find a legal basis or authority to provide financial assistance. I guess similar to the homeowner association, your homeowner's association, although I haven't, again, reviewed those rules and regulations. What the township did and could do, and I think was appropriate to do, was to engage a firm to do a study because there were questions as to whether or not there was a more widespread or issue of public interest, public health, safety, and welfare as a result of what we were getting. But on the basis of the report, on the basis of the facts as we now know them, and just applying that to the law, again, I see no basis for the township to be able to expend public dollars to address this private issue. And again, the township is not liable, clearly not liable, for negligent inspection.
Any questions from council members?
Goodness, Mr. DePiero.
I need to preface my question with some brief background. We had a meeting about a year ago. Earl, you were there. Nancy Di Eduardo was there. The administration was there. Kevin was there. And I brought with me a drawing of Glenmont Commons showing the water distribution, the high-pressure pipe going up Glenmont Commons from Aldova Road, and that there was a low-pressure pipe on Aldova Road. And that drawing had little red marks near all the homes that had experienced water breaks, either inside the house or in the entrance to the house, between the curb and the home. And as I recall, there were at least 80 or 90% of those little red marks were on the bottom half of Glenmont Commons. And there were very few red marks on the top half of Glenmont Commons, where the water pressure is reduced because of the height. I had asked at that time whether it would be possible, obviously, if it were strictly the rocks, and surely that's, that's a significant factor, if it were strictly the rocks and the way the pipes were placed, and maybe some defective pipes, then all of Glenmont Commons should experience about the same number of breaks, not just 80 or 90% of them in the lower half of Glenmont Commons. So, my conclusion was that the water pressure has a lot to do with it, maybe, maybe taking some of those cracks and flaws and making them worse. My question to you at the time, Earl, was, would it be possible to disconnect the high-pressure pipe at Aldova Road and, in fact, distribute the low pressure at the bottom end of Glenmont Commons? Reconnect that high-pressure pipe halfway up the hill so that the upper half of the hill and the tower can get the water pressure they need? And that, and that would not solve the problem, but it would certainly lessen significantly, I believe, the problem. I never did receive an answer to my question in the year since we had that meeting, and I was just wondering, what happened to that question, and is there an answer to it? Was that looked at as, as was promised?
Mike, as a matter of fact, you know, what we did is, is the report, you know, and I understand pressure was an issue, and Earl is going to explain that, that you were concerned about pressure, but through the, the study and the evaluation, pressure, in fact, was not a root cause of the failure of the Glenmont Commons. And I don't know if you want to expand on the pressure issue, Earl?
It just needs a minute if you turn it off.
Yeah, I turned it off for a second.
Give it a second.
Test. Well, if we want to expand on that, you know, pipe is 200 PSI pipe. It should be suitable for that service. You could, in theory, replumb the Glenmont Commons. It would be an order to magnitude more expensive than probably replacing the units. I don't think there would be any guarantee that it would solve the problem. I think there were some, also some issues with how you were cutting off going up the hill, and we, I think you were gonna have to buy more water from Morris County MUA.
That's not what I was suggesting, no.
But I don't believe we had available. Is that correct, Kevin? I believe we were at our capacity.
Yeah.
Yeah. It wasn't an option.
What I was suggesting was not, was not, we have, we have the low-pressure water pipe on Aldova Road.
Right.
Okay? And the high-pressure pipe goes right past that.
Right.
Right? So, at that point, we could break the high-pressure pipe and connect the low-pressure that would feed the homes at the low end of Glenmont Commons.
Right.
Then you have to run that high-pressure pipe up the street, which is an expense. I agree.
Right.
Bypassing all the homes up to the top half of Glenmont Commons and reconnecting it at the top half of Glenmont Commons.
I think you're also gonna separate the system from the tanks where everything normally floats. So, you're gonna create closed systems. You're gonna, it would require different types of pumping. There would be a lot of expense to it, and as far as you could go up that hill, it really wasn't that far. So, I don't think there was a tremendous benefit to doing that.
Well, then, well, then, help me to understand. Why is 80% of the failures at the low end of Glenmont Commons?
I can't explain that to you. I mean, you could correlate it to pressure. You could correlate it to poor, worse installations down there. You could correlate it to a different batch of pipe down there. I'm not sure. I don't, I don't think you can just pin it on pressure. The pipe was suitable for the pressure.
I agree, pressure's not, not the, not the only cause. I agree to that.
Right.
I'm conceding that, okay? But what I'm saying is, the top end of the hill doesn't have the same problems at the low end of the hill does, you know? And the only difference between the low end and the top end is water pressure. Would you agree to that?
I, actually, I don't know if I would agree to that because there
I assume that whatever flaws they had in placing the pipes, they did at the top end the same way they did at the bottom end.
I guess you, you could speculate that, but I don't know if you could, you're certain. I mean, you'd have to find the batches of pipe, where they got them from, the service, the time of the installations. You know, maybe they had better control of the backfill up there. I don't know.
Well, the administration's not gonna be happy with me, even though we have no legal responsibility in this case. My opinion is, we, we do have a moral obligation, in my opinion, to try to do something for the residents. And I would, I would like, again, for my proposal to be looked at and see if there's a way we can put low pressure at the low end of Glenmont Commons and high pressure further up the hill to supply the tower and the upper end of Glenmont Commons. I'd like that to be looked at, like the way I asked for a year ago.
Earl, I agree a lot with what Mr. DePiero was saying. You had mentioned earlier that there's 400 residents in Glenmont Commons in the townhouses?
That's correct.
Okay. There's about 74% failures?
No, 74.
I'm sorry, 74 failures, 90%.
Down to 19%.
Okay. Out of those 74 failures, how many of them were a double break? Because I know some of those residents there had the second time around where the line blew off in the wall inside the house.
I don't have that information.
I think you might be referencing for a moment, if
No, seventy-four.
I'm sorry, seventy-four failures, nineteen percent.
Down to nineteen percent.
Okay. Out of those seventy-four failures, how many of them were a double break? Because I know some of those residents there had the second time around where the line blew off in the wall inside the house.
I don't have that information.
I think you might be referencing for a moment, if I could, Councilman Valori, a double break are people that only replaced a section of pipe that exhibited the damage, they did not replace their entire pipe. So, in essence, the problem that caused the first break, the same thing caused the second. So, there was a, as in Mr. Dorfman's case, he only replaced a section of the broken pipe, did not replace the entire pipe.
Okay.
So, therefore, you're getting a double-break kind of scenario.
Hey, let me follow up on that, then. I need to get a copy of that list that Mrs. Jeanie Toretto-
You know what, Councilman Valori, you can have a copy of anything you want and ask me at a council meeting, you know-
Hold on, I'm not done talking. I'm not done talking, don't interrupt me, please, okay?
Excuse me?
Did you hear what I said? Don't interrupt me. I'm asking a question. Just listen to what I'm saying.
Mr. Valori, I don't appreciate that tone.
There's seventy-four breaks, okay? I would like to get a copy of the units that obviously had the breaks. And here's a concern that I have, is that, do you have a breakdown of each one of the damages that were caused to those residents? Because the question I have is that I was approached by a resident that there was a double break in the wall inside their house. So, that appears to be water pressure, okay? So, if we could identify exactly where these breaks were, and I know for a fact also, at the end, at the bottom of Summer Hill Drive, in the street there, there was actually a break that was inside the street, and it was running forever. So, you know, us having this open forum here, there's a lot of information that we're not provided as a council and that we had asked for. So, I want to get to the bottom of it, but it seems to me that there's a couple of issues going on here. I'm very concerned about what Mr. DePiero says. It appears that there is major water pressure issue there because there's a allocation of units that are towards the bottom of the hill that have a lot of breaks going on there. And then, secondly, obviously, there has to be some failure here with the inspectors on the town's fault because that should have never occurred. And again, I don't know in regards to the faulty pipe. You had said that, obviously, you sampled a section of piping that looked like it was frayed. And then I was going to follow up and ask you, okay, what unit did we get that from? How was it inspected? Who actually retrieved it? What's like, what was the continuity of evidence to say that this really happened this way? We, you know, like Mr. DePiero said, we do have a moral obligation. I know what Mr. Inglisino said, that we don't have a legal obligation, but there's people that, you know, we're in the winter, the mid-of-winter right now, and we would hate to see people being, obviously having water breakage, you know, on their property damage and not be able to stay there. Because I will tell you, Nancy DeGuardo, I went down by her and helped her over the summer, there was a break in a house, and that poor woman who was having a baby had to move out of the house because the bottom of the basin was flooded. So, I want to get to the bottom of that, and I like, you know, the idea what Mr. DePiero had said in regards to the pressure, you know, can we do something to maybe reduce that pressure there? Thank you.
Councilman Valori, what documentation would you like?
The list of homeowners that had the breaks, and then also identifying what type of break it was. I know that you were sent an email, and I did not receive that list. Based on the transactions going back and forth in the email, you requested that, obviously, the list to be provided, and I figured that I would have gotten that list sent to me. So, at least at this meeting, we could identify the different units and know where the breaks were. Were they in the street? Were they in individuals' homes? And Mr. DePiero's bringing up a lot of good points here, and I just want to really follow up on this because we do have a moral obligation to the folks that live up there.
Well, the list that you are talking about was requested by resident Jeanie Toretto, and in that email, I explained to Jeanie that the list could be released through following the rules dictated by Oprah. I did not receive a request from you, Councilman Valori, for that list.
Yeah, but she CC'd me on it in regards to directing you. Obviously, you're reading the email, and that I'm needing the, obviously, list. So, you think common sense would be, you would send me the list, especially for tonight's meeting that we're discussing this.
Councilman Valori, I cannot be directed by the public for a document, that's a public document. Mr. Valori, full of respect-
So, you think in a courtesy that you should have gave your councilman a call and said, hey, listen, do you need this list for tonight? Is that an obligation on your part? I would think so.
That can go both ways, Councilman Valori.
Okay, so, we'll do is, we'll get the list by then tonight.
We'll get you the list, we'll get you the list. It could go both ways.
Okay, great.
I mean, you know, you could have asked for it as well, and we'll get it.
Okay, all right. We'll discuss later on what we could be discussing.
We can.
Mr. Schneider, I have a question for you. I know seventy-four of the breaks have been in the lower part of the development with the condos there. And is there any way that we can take a proactive approach and inspect some of these pipes towards the upper portion so that we can determine, is there a chance that this, you know, in the next year or two may start happening up there as well? Where now we can say, well, it's not going to be just the lower port because you're able to see some of this piping, and if there's damage where it looks like it could start happening up there, then now we're able to say, well, it's not just the lower portions' problem. And this way, we're actually taking a proactive approach to this matter and possibly saving residents a lot of aggravation that live towards the middle and the upper part of this development. Is there any way of us doing that, or no?
Well, you know, the pipe's buried. That's, you know, the one problem. It's just not readily accessible. If you wanted to be very proactive, I guess you could exhume some of it, you know, excavate. You'd have to be careful not to damage it.
Right.
Make a full forensic accounting of what you find, you know, the rock impingement, how marked up the pipe is. You know, maybe you'll find a different condition up there, maybe you'll find a better embedded pipe. Talking with Dow and NDOT, they also said, if you could give them a section of pipe, that they would be happy to test it. And NDOT is on record saying that if it is a fault of theirs, they will be responsible for the pipe. But I, we just haven't got enough samples out of the ground. So, yeah, you could probably take some samples out, but those places where you took the samples, at that point, you would replace those because you'd have to get the service back.
Right.
Then you'd have a full piece of pipe. And the NDOT said, if you gave them the pipe and it said, you know, all the information on the pipe, that's what they need on the section, they would test it for you. So, that's something you could actually do.
And they've stated that if that pipe comes back faulty, that they would-
Yeah, I'm not sure if they're-
Be responsible?
You know, I'm not sure, the conversation in terms of whether they would pay for the entire installation or just the pipe itself. So, the pipe itself isn't very expensive. So, you'd have to kind of nail them down a little bit more on what they meant.
No, because I know, like, for instance, Mr. Dorfman stated that he's had to pay $10,000 out of his own pocket-
Right.
-and let it within a few-month period-
Right, yeah.
You know, for this. I mean, that's a lot of money.
I have another question, too. Mike, you had brought up a good point, Mr. DePiero. In regards to the street itself, where water lines may run into the townhouse units, what if in fact, if there was rocks that were obviously buried on top of those lines in the roadway, per se, right? And the dimension of that pipe gets smaller, right? Would that create more pressure going into someone's house?
No, that would not.
That wouldn't? Okay.
That would not.
Mr. Schneider.
Yeah.
An additional question. You know, I agree with Mr. DePiero as well, and we do have a more responsibility to our residents, especially with the number of residents that are involved. I also agree with, you know, Councilman Karifi in reference to it being proactive. Along the lines of being proactive, if you excavate additional properties on the upper end or even on the lower end, you do risk damaging the pipe because you could hit it when you're excavating it for testing. But is there a camera system that could be inserted into the pipe to test the diameter to see if there's any fissures or expansions, to see the diameter of the pipe going straight into the home?
You have a one-inch pipe, and I'm not sure if the internal diameter is a full one-inch, but to try to get a camera in there, I'm not going to say no. And it's something that, you know, we can talk to a few folks who do, you know, CCTV type, you know, closed-circuit television work.
Yes, closed-circuit television.
But, you know, you might, I'm not sure you're going to see anything is the problem. You're going to get in there and, you know, if there's a rock impingement, it's coming from the outside, I mean, you might, at that resolution, too, I'm not sure you're going to see anything on the pipe itself.
You could see a possible ping where it's indented or whether it's bubbling. If the diameter is not perfectly round, then you might be able to forecast that there is an additional problem. It could be a rock laying on it or something to that nature.
You could try. I, you know, unfortunately, I think you could spend a lot of money and get no good data. You might just go through pipe through pipe and not see anything, whereas if you pull a section, more like, you know, get the whole piece out, look at the inside and the outside. You know, I think, I know the one thing that, you know, Kevin's crew did was go up and listen. I would keep a proactive program of listening to all the services because that will tell you, I mean, it's after the fact, but, you know.
Is there anything you could tell by the meter, the way the meter is spinning or calculating?
Well, no, because the meter's in the house.
It's in the house.
But could a resident determine something? Is he regular by looking at the meter?
No, he's not going to tell, because the leak is outside, so only the water that goes inside, and that will just remain the same anytime you open a faucet or, you know, run the shower, that meter inside's just going to spin the same. The outside is not going to have any influence on the meter.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Schneider. Mr. Inglisino, I just have one additional question. Since there's a number of homes that are affected, is there a builder remedy that they can pursue, or can the township help them with any builder remedy, since the builder is actively billing throughout the town currently?
I'm not, would not be appropriate for me to provide legal advice to homeowners in terms of recourse against private parties. Obviously, I would always advise that when folks are aggrieved, that they consult with an attorney that represents their interests and to seek direction that way.
Usually, is there a homeowner warranty when a new home is constructed these days? It's ten years, or?
Well, there are homeowner warranties, you know, they should seek legal counsel from a lawyer who specializes in that kind of work, that can advise as to what is covered and what is not covered on a homeowner's warranty. I know there are different aspects of the home that are covered over the course of a period of time, but some of that coverage burns off sooner in the warranty period than later as it relates to certain items. But, you know, again, as much as I think all of us, and me included, feel for what has happened, we've been hearing it, listening to it, and have learned about it, you know, my job is not to provide legal advice to the residents in this type of a situation. But they certainly should, and I would encourage them, to seek legal counsel, to provide them with that advice.
Thank you.
If the council decides that we want to go forward and do some of the inspections that we spoke about, you mentioned a comment about not being able to use taxpayer money.
Yeah, I don't think it's, I think it's ultra-viruses. You know, again, I'm the lawyer here, I don't always tell people what they want to hear. That's my, my job is to just call balls and strikes. And the reality is, is that I think that based upon the work that has been done, this is clearly a private matter. This is clearly a private pipe on private property that only affects the owner of that property. It's not a situation that deals with the water main or anything of that nature. And so, I don't think that it's appropriate, based upon what the law says, what the New Jersey State Constitution says, to expend taxpayer dollars, you know, to do those kinds of inspections. In fact, I think that you put the taxpayers at some risk in doing that because if pipes are damaged, there's liability concerns and issues associated with all of that, in addition to the issues of the appropriateness of using the funds for that purpose. So, I know that's not what folks want to hear. If I were in your position, that's not what I would want to hear. But again, I'm just, you know, trying to do my job and provide you with the correct legal advice.
Mr. Schneider, some of the other feedback that I've received is, some of these homes had water pipes burst inside their homes and have had plumbers put pressure reducers inside of their homes to solve the problem inside the home. But that doesn't solve the problem outside the home. And it would be very expensive to put pressure reducers at every tap going along the pipe, the high-pressure pipe, that would be very, very cost-prohibitive. That's why the alternative I had suggested, I would still like somebody to look at, okay, is to see if we can bypass the high-pressure pipe at the low end and reconnect it up the upper end so Kevin gets his water pressure that he needs at the top.
I agree. I think we should at least give it a try.
Yes.
Mr. Schneider, if I can ask you one more question.
Yeah.
In all the studies and all the experience you have, have you ever seen something like this?
No, I'm not.
Okay.
I would like to request formally that the administration look at my request to bypass the high-pressure pipe at the low end of Glenmount Commons.
Mike, I'll support you on that.
And just from a legal perspective, I think Councilman DePiero's request is entirely appropriate. I can't say whether or not it will have any desired effect, but certainly the area of controlling water pressure is something that you can do legally if you want to.
Okay, we'll do that.
Okay. All right, no other questions from the council. At this time, we're going to open up public hearing for this matter only. You'll be given three minutes. You can come up, you can sign in, state your name and address. Entertain a motion to open up the public for this matter, this matter only.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Paluso, seconded by Mr. DePiero. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Can I start?
Yes.
Okay, good evening. I'm a resident in Glenmount Commons. I have a unit in townhome, and I recently moved to single-family home as well. I hear the report from the engineering firm. I also heard from the attorney what are the town's responsibility and what they can or cannot do. One of the things we noticed is that the pressure-reducing wall that we use inside our home, which is rated for twenty-five, thirty years' life, it's getting knocked out in eight, nine, ten years, right? So, that's one observation that I have, that how come these pressure-reducing walls that can handle 300 PSI, some of them 400 PSI, are also breaking? So, it tells me that the pressure is probably more than 200 PSI, maybe at the nighttime when nobody's using their water. So, that one thing probably we need to look at. The second thing is, I, you know, I heard from the attorney that, you know, why town is not responsible, right? But we, as a homeowners who came and bought these homes, this is not something that is visible to us, right? It's buried under the ground, builder, you know, build these, you know, pipes and the deliveries. Maybe their contractor did not do a good job, but at the same time, town inspector whose responsibility is to, you know, monitor this for 400 homes, and we have seventy-four failures. And honestly, I think there are more failures than seventy-four, but seventy-four itself is a very high number, right? Maybe they looked somewhere else and gave those approvals, right? And I understand some of you, you know, raise this concern that we have a moral responsibility. If I were in your spot, yes, I would feel I am morally responsible, sitting on this chair, then all these residents who are, you know, getting impacted, to do something about it. You know, yes, there are, you know, laws that will protect you, town, I'm sure there are enough that will protect us, too. And again, you know, we can look at, nobody wants to go to the legal way of resolving this, right? But there is definitely a moral responsibility on town's part to look at their action. This is not involving one or two homeowners, right? Four hundred homes, most of these problems started just two years back. Things were okay, you go back five years, something has changed. Maybe you need to increase the pressure to give water to, you know, homes which are at the height, I understand. But the point is, everybody's sitting as, you know, sitting duck, their numbers are coming. Today also, when I'm driving from the community, I see one more truck there having to dig up somebody's home on Summer Hill Drive.
Thirty seconds, sir.
Right? So, this is happening, it's going to happen to everybody in the community, and even though problem is more focused right now in the townhomes, I have moved to single-family homes. I know there are four or five homes already broken in single-family homes. One on Gathering Hill Court, Lou, you live in that street?
Yes.
Seasons Glen Drive, all the way at the end, which is the last home in Glenmount- Seasons Glen Drive, all the way at the end, which is the last home in Glenmont Commons, the highest top, he had a problem too, and there are two right at the beginning of Seasons Glen Drive. So, this problem is impacting not just lower homes, it's affecting everybody, and it's a ticking time bomb, and we really appreciate if town does something to, you know, help homeowners and not let us sit, you know, in, in, you know, cold and, you know, wait for our turn, you know, remedy ourselves.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Just, Mr. Snyder, real quick, the, the gentleman, I'm going to try to get you an answer to your questionnaire, depending on the time of day, wouldn't matter water pressure? Okay, thank you, thank you, sir.
Hi, good evening, thank you. My name is Pamela Claxton, I am a resident of, not a resident, I'm sorry, a homeowner at Glenmont Commons, and I do live at the lower end, I'm two, two doors from the bottom of that, the entry to the end, just close to the entry. I do want to just pick up on a couple of points that were made. One is that I think Mr. Snyder mentioned needing whole sections of pipes in order to do appropriate analyses. I was a person who actually did provide a whole section, and I have pictures of a lot of what happened to my house. Part of the other thing that's happening here, which I think Councilman DePiero and Valori were getting at, was what's happening, where are these breaks happening? There are actually two foundations under these homes, one under the house and one under the porch. In my case, the one under the porch broke, and there was water going in the house and water coming out of, out, sort of underneath the porch and through, and onto my driveway. So, I can give more details as to how this all happens, at least from my own experience, if, if the council is interested in that, I'll either write a report for you of what happened, and I, I'm happy to share the photos, I think I did share some with Paula, but, and had a long conversation with her, but I can even show you the long piece of pipe, it's, it's 5'3", and it was about three inches taller than me. It was a very long, and it did have a split along the, the end, and it did, I had all, he also mentioned that he needed all of the written information on the pipe, my pipe had all of that, and I turned it over in good faith to, you know, to, to have this analyses done. That was one thing I did want to address. And there was something else, I'm sorry now, I probably forgot, that some members mentioned. You mentioned about the pressure issue and a smaller diameter versus that, that, that doesn't help because of a whole physics thing, and I want to just express my appreciation to Councilman DePiero, because had your suggestion been taken up, or at least some kind of solution, it would have saved me, because mine broke in July of 2013. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Quick question. Those photos, which the council did not have a copy of, is there a possibility that you could reach out to the clerk, send her those photos, download them, so she could then distribute to everyone? I'm very disgusted that we're only getting a report now, I know it took a long time, I had a lot of issues about that, and obviously, the folks that were involved with this, but that's an issue that I got to resolve here.
Thank you, I'm happy to provide mine, I have pictures of this pipe section, I have pictures of when they dug eight feet down to get the pipe, as well as the porch and inside the house as well, that front wall where, where all of the defects actually happened, because the valve was leaking, the pipe broke under the porch, I mean, it was just a mess, and it's, it's, I'm still trying to get back from all of this, and it's been this many months later, so I just want to express that.
And if you could get them over by tomorrow, that'd be great, those photos?
Here's my email address.
I'll be happy to mail them.
Mr. Snyder, just a quick question, how long did it take actually to complete this report that we're receiving tonight? How long was this study on this report?
He needs, he needs the mic. Could you, could you just sit up, could you sit up front here in case we have any more questions like this, this way you can have the microphone?
Yeah, how, how long did it take to actually compile this, this report?
I would have to go back and look.
Over a year?
I don't believe that long, but it, it was definitely months.
Well, I've been on the council a year, I heard about it, but never saw it until tonight, and then again, the list of all these people that were involved, it would have been so much more helpful if, you know...
I don't, I don't have it right off the top of my head, remember when I was asked to start looking into this, so...
Okay, just one other question. Mr. DePiero brought up again, in regards to the water pressure, do we have any records of internally, of the water pressure, of, you know, what a constant pressure is throughout the town or in that neck of the woods where we live up there in Glenmont Commons? Is there any indicators, because, you know, it just seems that there's that lower portion of the hill that's taking a beat in there, so, you know, she had me mention that, you know, this happened like two years ago, that was just up here? So, would we go back in time in our record to say, yeah, the water pressure was high in this particular day at all? Is there any internal controls to know, like a record of where the water pressure was?
Um, let's, uh, try to answer your question the best I can. The, the water up in that part of the development is pumped into tanks.
Okay.
And those tanks set the pressure, all right?
Actually, do we know when those, those tanks were actually filled for water pressure?
Well, those tanks are filled, those tanks are filled and emptied every day.
Okay.
And they probably move, Kevin would know, in about a 10-foot range, so 10, 10 feet of water in, in terms of PSI is about 4 PSI, so the pressures up there will fluctuate about 4 PSI a day. So the numbers that I gave in that range from 70 to 200 PSI are the most conservative numbers, that would be a full tank. When you turn on the pump station, the pressure does go up a little bit, but up there, it's only a couple of PSI, so when I answer no, it just goes, it just goes up a little bit, so...
So, my point is, is there almost like a fingerprint left behind? Do you have a gauge or meter to say, on this, this day, like, you know, a rectus scale, you know, it moved up, you know, we, we filled up the tanks twice that day up in the towers, or it came down so much? Because there has to be some type of indicator there in regards to the pressure, so we could kind of get a better gauge on it, you know, Mr. DePiero brought up a good, a point, so there has to be something that's calculated there that we can follow.
Word of mouth that I got, if I can just interject here, from some of the residents, is that the low end of Glenmont Commons, it's quite common to see 200 PSI.
Okay.
And at the high end of Glenmont Commons, it's typical to be about 90 PSI.
90.
Now, this is not from professionals, this is from residents.
Yeah, no, that's, 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 that's the, the range, but the math is as simple as the height of the tank, water elevation, minus the ground, you know, the, the ground elevation, that's the, the basic math, but to answer your question, there are chart recorders, and that's what you have up there, right, Kevin? And the chart recorders just show the level of the tank, and if you know the level in the tank, you know the pressure at the tank. You also have pressure recorders at the pump station in Skoda, or?
Where?
Yeah, so...
So, the question, do I have, is that recorder of what you're telling me, is it in this report?
There's information about pressure, but not that recorder.
Okay, can we go back in time and get a copy of maybe where that was at, so we could actually see, you know, in, in writing, to know where it was at?
That's actually a better question for Kevin, because I don't know how their historical database holds information.
Kevin, can we do that? Can you provide the council with that?
Okay, Mike, that's all right.
Will, will you tell me, based on the report, when did all these breaks start?
Well, um...
First, I'll look at this report, and I didn't even get to go through it on this ass, common sense questions.
Right, no, I, I can understand that. The information I was provided showed these started in 2011.
So we'll start at 2011 to present?
And, and just to, just open that topic up a tiny bit more, Paula indicated that at the, in 2011, the town, the, the water crew responded to noticing that there was more water being used up there, so things had happened actually before then, you understand? Because there was leakage, so they started listening, and so whether it was 2010 or 2009, so, but Kevin, I guess you have that data in some database. Just going back on the pressures, yeah, I, I don't think you're going to see any real anomalies, to tell you the truth.
I have a question. The young lady that just spoke said that she gave a good-sized portion of her pipe...
Five foot.
Over five foot, to be inspected, and also had all of the writing, all of the information that you stated...
Right.
That you would need, or the company would need, to inspect that pipe, so what happened with that?
Is that one of the ones that went to?
That pipe is at Dow Chemical right now.
Yeah, so that is one of the samples that went out.
So there, so that's there now?
Right.
So that, we haven't gotten that report back yet on that, on her pipe?
Yeah, I have to look at the specific address and the, there was a few things, and they sent some information, and indicating some of the problems with the brittle nature of the pipe, and I don't know exactly this piece or where it stands, but we haven't got Dow to quite bring their answers to, to the, their, the final stage. It's been a little bit hard getting information out of them, is that a fair...
That absolutely is. You know, Dow Chemical does not contract with us or anything like that. I've developed a relationship with Dr. Zhao, and he has very professionally answered my questions and has analyzed other pieces for me. He cannot do a conclusive report, he's a scientist, so he's got to go through the methodology of a scientific experiment, and he needs, he needed a good piece of pipe, which Dr. Claxton's pipe did exhibit, and he looks at that in comparison to the, the natural state of the raw materials. You can't know the defect until you've analyzed the actual nat- natural state of the materials versus a material that has become defective. He's got to recreate the scenario in order to find the root cause of either a stage-two or stage, stage-three failure, as Earl had pointed out, a brittle fracture. That's a stage-two failure, if I'm not mistaken, Earl.
Okay, so, when we do get that back, will, the council will be advised of that?
Um, I think that's a question for Paula, she's in contact with Dow.
Yeah, that is a question for me, absolutely. I followed up with Dr. Zhao, I informed him that this was going to be publicly discussed, and, you know, the best I can do is keep tracking him down, and, and go through NDOT at this point, I think I'm going to have to contact Dick again and, you know, put, put some pressure on that as well.
I mean, just based on what you had said earlier, and, like she had said, the piece that she provided, that, that may prove pivotal.
Well, you know, as I mentioned before, we, there were, there was one puncture, and there were three of these longitudinal splits, so the puncture, you know, NDOT and Dow kicked back, and they said that's, that's a puncture, that's a rock impingement.
Okay.
The longitudinal splits, I think, is where they, they tested them, and they saw these brittle cracks, and that's where they, like, the jury's still out from them, you know, I'm not the scientist, from them saying, this is a brittle failure because of the manufacturing or the extrusion of the pipe.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Vigilante, you probably know my brother Jimmy, he's deceased now. I've been an original homeowner since 2001 in a development. My pipe broke in 2011, I lost my job and was freaking out because this was costing like $7,000 to fix this, and we didn't have the money, but after getting really upset at Mr. Mossberg, the builder, he finally, he helped me, but he patched the pipe, he put a coupling in the pipe, so it's still like that now. Originally, I can't sell the home like that, I would not sell it to somebody, because I know that that pipe is going to break again. There are pressure-reducing valves in the house, mine broke right under the porch, and it flooded my neighbor's basement, thank God it didn't flood ours, but it still flooded his, and he had mud going, oh, from the beginning of his basement, all the way to the back of his basement, and he had to spend a lot of money to fix that, and to clean the basement, and I felt really bad, it wasn't my fault, so, and I'm still not able to fix the walk because we have to fix the pipe, and I can't fix the walk, we don't have the money to fix the pipe, so we're leaving the coupling in that right now. So, it's very difficult, there's people that have owned homes 50 years and their pipes never broke, there's obviously a problem in that development with these pipes, and you were speaking of rock. When they dug up the ground, there were slabs of concrete, now I did take pictures, I don't know if I have them, I don't even know if I'm on record, yeah, there's slabs of concrete that were thrown in there, that's going to put pressure on those pipes to crack those pipes. I did have the pipe, I'm not sure if I still have it, and I know there was a crack in the pipe. Those pipes are seven feet down, that they had to dig to put that coupling in, so it's very disturbing. We spent a lot of money on those homes, I know I worked really hard to buy that house, I worked a lot of weekends to buy that house, I'm really proud to own that house, I'm proud to live in Parsippany, but it puts a real financial burden on all of us that own those homes, and it's not our fault, there's something wrong there, whether it's the pressure, the pipe, the rock, it could be all, all of it that's causing it, but it still leaves the financial burden on the homeowner, and it's very difficult, and I understand you guys are trying to help us, and, you know, you do have a moral responsibility, but, I mean, this guy spent $10,000, that's a lot of money, to fix something that people have had their homes for 50, 60 years, and they still have the same original pipe. My mom still has the same pipe, hers didn't break, and yes, it's more difficult because it is in a mountain, but those people that did those inspections, there's rock under there that doesn't belong there, there's concrete slabs that are under there that were just thrown in there, that's going to put extra pressure, like you said, the ground's going to settle, and that, those slabs are going to settle on that pipe and crack that pipe. So, I just thank you for the time, and hopefully you can help us.
Thank you.
Mr. Snyder, what's the average cost of a, say, the average cost of a pipe to be, not refurbished, to be repaired?
As a matter of fact, Mayor, it's $3,750. The line that is for a trench, this is, excuse me, the data that I get that from, when people put out a building permit, they have to put the value of the construction, these are the values of the construction that they put on their permit, so that is the data I go by, so $3,750 typically. Kevin, if you can confirm, I know you've been familiar with some of these, these trenchless actually excavations.
I can't hear what it's...
Not a total replacement.
Right, okay.
It's hard to hear, Mike.
Yeah. Yeah. What I'm asking, Kevin, I don't want installation of a new pipe, I want repair if something were to happen to a pipe, if you have that.
No, I'm not, if you're just cutting out a piece of the plastic that...
Right.
No.
Okay, so then...
But that's, that's not...
So the average cost would be $3,750?
We're getting $3,700 for the pipe burst, pulling the copper through the existing, where we're not getting any...
But, but understand what that is, that's replacing the line with a copper through the existing polyethylene line, it's about $3,750 average repair cost.
Okay.
Ma'am, did you sign in?
Yes, I did.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just say one, two, three...
No.
It may not go.
If you, if you want to grab the mayor off to the side on break or after the meeting...
Don't hit me.
Okay. He'll love to talk to you.
Go ahead, man. Sorry, sorry.
My name is Nancy Koiner, and I live at 35, 359 Summer Hill Drive. I'm at the very top of the hill, my pipe burst this summer, and two of the people on the same row where I live have had their pipes burst twice.
And you're at the top of the hill?
Yes. Now, there might be others that have had their pipe burst, but those, I know of those two. And the man I hired to fix my pipe used a camera to go through the, the pipe, find where the, the break was, so I know that they're able to do that, and it's very helpful to do.
Could I ask you how much it costs you to put the camera through the pipe? Roughly?
The man I hired did that, I don't know, I don't know.
That, that camera that was inserted in there, that was to find out where the actual break was in the line?
Yes, yes.
So that's still, like you had said earlier, Mr. Snyder, that a camera, if there was no break, and it was just used for inspectional purposes, it may not be able to pick up until there actually is a break in the line.
Right.
No, he probably did that because if the pipe is crushed, he can't pull copper through it if it's completely crushed.
No, he did it, he wanted to find out where it was leaking.
No, I think he, what he wanted to do was to make sure that he could, he could go all the way through the pipe with copper, go through the plastic pipe with copper, and if it was crushed, he wouldn't be able to do that.
Are you on the list for the 74 failures? Is your name on there, regards?
No, it is not.
Okay, so that's going to be important, too, that you give your information to the clerk... Right.
Now, he probably did that because if the pipe is crushed, he can't pull copper through it if it's completely crushed.
No, he did it. He wanted to find out where it was leaking.
No, I think he, what he wanted to do was to make sure that he could, he could go all the way through the pipe with copper, go through the plastic pipe with copper. And if it was crushed, he wouldn't be able to do that.
Are you on the list for the 74 failures? Is your name on there in regards?
No, it is not.
Okay. So that's gonna be important too, that you give your information to the clerk. And if you could give us any information in regards to, to identify, you know, photos, you know, anything that will help us so we could really brainstorm this with the council to see what we could do with the mayor. Mayor, I'll put you in here. Uh, what we could do morally right for, you know, the folks up there.
Yeah.
So I'm just glad that I asked you that because I figured there was some more. So we're really up at 75 failures then?
Well, I'd say there might be a few more.
Okay.
Now it leads me to think how many others are not on the list.
Some people are having it fixed without permits.
Yeah, right.
There are some dark figures there. Yeah, nobody knows about.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. If you could give your information to Nancy, the clerk, too. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time this evening. Actually, I think I was the first one...
Sir, state your name and address, please.
My name is Naveen Bahalwani. I live in 119 Summer Hill Drive, just, you know, across the same street as her. And I think my house was first of the few initial ones where the pipe actually broke. And I did replace it with a copper pipe, right?
Okay.
And to your point, actually, I think there's a fact that there's something to do with the pressure because within the next two years, my pressure regulator wall again gave way and I had to replace it again. So the question remains, though, if things like this happen again and again, every time the PRV goes off, I'll have to pay $400, $500 to replace it, right? In addition to the cost of the pipe replacement that I had before, right? So I think that's a fair statement, as Mr. DePiero said, that something has to be looked at. It could be the water pressure that's affecting. And within a year or two, every time, you know, the toilets start leaking again. So there has something definitely to do with the pressure, um, just to, you know, let the people know.
Are you on the list also?
I should be. I think I have sent some emails back and forth.
Maybe you could confirm that to make sure?
Yeah.
Hey, um, Mayor, just a quick question, because you brought up. Do we have a list of folks up there in Glenmont that actually had gotten permits to get work done? Because they might not be also on this extensive list of 75 folks.
We can check, we can get that information.
Yeah, if we could do that.
The list that is in the report is reflective of those that required, I believe, Kevin, a water shut-off on and off in order to get their service repaired.
And just a time correction, I think my house, my pipe broke around 2009, oh, 2011, 2010, November or October. So, you know, I think when you collect the data...
That's what we really need to do, is go over this data. Thank you.
Paula, the list that, the list that we have, that you said there's 74 people on it?
Yes.
When, when was that last updated?
Uh, December 17th of 2014.
Oh, okay, so it is recent. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, but you know what? Like I said, unfortunately, some people don't necessarily follow the permitting process. So I don't know, some people, um, you know, so, as mu- as comprehensive as it, as it can be, it can only be, the more data we get, can only do that. We can only base it on when residents contact us for service to shut their water service off so their water line could be repaired. A plumber, by the way, can do that without our knowledge.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Hi. I am Onkara Murthy Murundi. I live in 124 Summer Hill Drive. I'm, I own the, I own the unit. So far, touch wood, I, I don't have an impact on this water, water main breakage. But my question is, Councilman DePiero brought up this earlier, like, from the municipal unit until our home, our lines are breaking. To install a PRV at each of the unit, you said it is gonna cost a lot of money. Will the, will this town will be okay if we volunteer to install a PRV over there so that line from the municipal unit until our home will be protected?
What, what you're saying is, install a pressure reducer valve at the street level?
Yeah, at the street.
Coming to the home?
Yeah.
So you have to dig up the street and then put the reducer in at the street level?
Yeah.
I, I was told it's expensive. I have no idea what that means, how, how much we're talking about.
Yeah, I mean, is it, uh, average cost is coming to $3750. So, if that installation is gonna cost lesser than that, it is gonna at least bring down our aggravation. Will the town, township will be okay if we volunteer to put that money because Councilman was saying it is, I mean, even...
Maybe, maybe Kevin knows the answer to that. Kevin? Did you hear the question?
No, I did not, sir.
The question is, with all the money the residents are spending now to solve their problems, their water problems, and most of them is, is pressure problems, would they, what would it cost if they asked, they paid for a pressure reducer valve to be placed in the street leading to their home? Rather than run new pipes and pressure reducers in the house and all that stuff?
Um, I wouldn't know what it would cost, but I can...
I, I think it's important that the upkeep of the infrastructure is part of the cost. It's not just the mechanism in place itself. It's, it's, it's upkeeping to ensure they don't fail. There's more involved than just putting in a pressure reducing valve in the street, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, it's pretty, the problem is, your problem... Sorry.
If you're gonna go to correct this problem, I would look at it in terms of the overall life cycle cost. If you go and put copper in and spend the $3750, if that's the number, you're probably good forever. If you excavate and you put a pressure regulating valve where the curb stop is to reduce the pressure, now you have to leave some means of access. And this could be seven feet deep, some of these. So then you're gonna have to be able to get to it in the future. You're gonna have to make sure that it's protected from cold or you'll freeze your line. And the PRV itself only has a life, you know, up, up there. For some reason, your PRVs in the homes aren't lasting very long. But even if you had a, a good PRV, it'd be, you know, 20, 25 years maybe. So, if you looked at the term, in terms of the overall costs and the risk associated with it, I think the $3750 that, I would, I would recommend the pipe bursting with the copper.
Our problems are not solved. Our PRVs are getting...
No, those are the PFRVs in the home.
The home.
Right. Yeah.
That is broken. Yes, well, I would add, oh, the public is...
Right, no, I, I understand. Kevin could speak to this, too. The town has a lot of pressure, you know, I've looked at the hydraulics of the system and there's, there's quite a bit of the town, because you have a hilly town, where there's pressures above 150, 175 in, in this area. I would say the majority of those homes have PRVs.
The difference is, what they have is, besides the PRV, we've got areas, Mountain Way and Powder Mill, that intersection there, it's 200 PSI in the street there. The only difference with that whole mountain is all the services were copper, 3/4K, and to our knowledge, backfill correctly. That is the difference.
Interesting.
Okay? The pressure gradient's the same.
Are there PRVs in those homes last month? The life of the PRV in the house?
The life of the PRV in the house is, you know, you would think you would get more than eight, nine years off that PRV. So, if you do have to do it, you need to make a, you know, look for a good investment, not, you know, I'm not sure why those PRVs aren't lasting very long, but there's gotta be lots, residences in other parts of this town and in other communities. You know, I, I know about this and in hilly terrain, you, you can't give everybody the, you know, 60 PSI, you know, the perfect pressure. It's, it's just a function of the hills. And these homes, all throughout Morris County, have PRVs. Because what happens when they fail, you know, everyone knows that the hose on the, the washing machine blows off and, and things of those sorts. So, it, it's not a perfect world and for the folks in Glenmont Commons, it is gonna be important going forward to occasionally have a plumber look at your PRV to let you know it's got this many years left or not. Because, you know, when it does fail at that higher pressure, it, it can create problems in your home.
Thank you.
Did you sign in?
I will.
Sir, did you sign in?
I will. Thank you. Sorry. I'm Vamsi Pundla. I live in 71 Summer Hill Drive. I moved into Glenmont Commons in 2013. I bought a new home. One of the first beautiful sightings I saw over, next week, after I moved into the home is, there are a bunch of vans coming in, trenching out or trenchless. They're digging out the homes and the neighborhoods and they're putting the new pipes. So it was a really shocking thing for me when I inquired. Everybody asked as if, did you buy the home without knowing that this issue is going on there? So, well, same time, we, I organized ourselves. Nancy was helping a little bit in getting a room in the clubhouse of Powder Mill Height, Powder Mill Community. We all got together, we asked two, two vendors, two trenchless companies to come and give us a quote on what is the best price they can give for doing these repairs if you were to do proactively, as well as if there is any pipe break. From that point onwards, they came with the $3,700 average. Before that, individual homeowners, when they go and ask, when the water pipe breaks within the basement and if there's a leak, it was costing at least $5,000 if not more. So just to set the record straight, the average might be $3,700. There are many homeowners who paid a lot more than that.
Yeah.
Second one is, the pressure reducing wall. I asked my plumber whether he can put a PRV on the street side. One of the things he told is the building code, the, the codes doesn't permit. If that's the case, then we should probably modify it and give a relief on that side. So we don't want our basements to be flooded and our properties to be damaged. And if that could be done as a proactive installation by the township, that would be even better. We are, it will not be costing too much for the township if you really give it as a contract for 400 homes at the curb side, installing a PRV, industrial grade, which won't break every 10 years to Earl's point. It, it will probably solve the problem. So Onkar brought a very good point. Last one is, would we be reacting the same way had it been not water, if it is the gas pipes and if there is going to be accidents? Are we going to have the same calmness and with the same legal, whether we are, whether, who's liable or what? Would, would the township, as well as, will the residents be reacting in the same manner had it been gas pipes due to the pressure, due to the same conditions if they break and if they're going to be accidents? I don't think so. I don't believe so. So we should do something more than this. And I, I don't know for the fact what the status of the gas pipes is in, in our community and I'm really concerned about that. We all have children. We all want to live for a longer life. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think y'all know me by now. Jeff Dorfman, I live at 179 Spring Hill Drive. Great conversation tonight. Earl, great job with the study that you've done. What percent of the 74 were townhomes?
I don't know off the top of my head.
But a higher percent, you feel?
I, I have a map that I supplied in the report.
Okay.
That does show more towards the lower elevations.
Okay. But more in the townhomes tonight? Because we got, we got houses on the lower level as well.
I'd have to look at it in a little bit more detail.
Okay.
I just mapped them.
So, based on my discussions with homeowners, $3,700 is an average price for a trenchless. Two licensed plumbers, one who I chose to do the work, same as, same plumber that did Genie's work. I live right next door to Genie. Same amount of rock, which is amazing. They both recommended not to do trenchless. They, the reason why is because you got pressure of these boulders dropping down on the, on the, on the lines. And if you're putting copper through, which is much sturdier, I, I think, may last longer, but you still got the pressure of the boulders. So over time, if you got, especially, I mean, I can only talk to my lines. There was no sand, compacted sand, compacted, there was nothing under it. I got plenty of pictures to share with everyone. Genie found the same thing. I gotta believe it's more of a complex issue. It's not a water pressure only issue. I think it's multiple things. I think the primary issue is the fact that inspections weren't done to look at how these main lines ran into the home. It's huge. Didn't follow building code. The backfill that was used, who, who backfills with, with that? I mean, that, that's appalling. They dug up my line by the street. There was a huge boulder sitting on top of the gas line. So, Vamsi, I, I share your concern. I mean, that's a health and safety issue within the community itself, what I found, just on my property. So there might be a legal reason why you can't do it, not only moral, but health and safety for the community. I, I would suggest doing a walkthrough that you wanted to do, Mr. Valori. Do an inspection, prepare a report. We can help you prepare a report with the town homeowners that you could share with the people to show you, because no one's really contacted. I provided a pipe to Paula. I got pictures showing the breaks in the pipe, but it came back to me that they found no holes in the pipe, which, it's amazing. I'd like to give that pipe to you again, give it to Dow, let him do the inspection. It's got all the writings on here. It's got everything you need. So I, I really think it's a complex issue, but I think it's because of the backfill. And all that pressure expands this type of material much quicker than if it was copper. I mean, think about it. Couple hundred pound boulders sitting on top of these water lines. Fragile, expanding with the water pressure. Would the water pressure exacerbate when you got weight bearing down? Not at all. Okay. But even when the, over time, when the rocks are sitting on this and you have...
The pipe's not gonna expand, okay?
It won't expand by stretching with the weight bearing, bearing down?
Well, with the weight bearing down, it creates stresses, yeah, and that is probably what's creating some of those punctures.
Right, right. So, so because we count, when we buy properties, it's our primary investment. We're concerned about the value, maintaining the value within the community. We count on the inspection. We count on the hired hands of, of the town to protect our assets. We're paying our taxes. You gotta have the manpower to help protect our assets when you build new homes. There's building codes. You gotta help protect homeowners' assets. That's what we're counting on. That's what the inspectors are for. Anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That is a picture of my property, but that's only some of the rock that they dug out of the trenches. First of all, I'd like to start by thanking the councilmen for...
Just state, state your name and address.
I'm so sorry. Jean Torito, 173 Spring Hill Drive. I'd like to thank the council members for all of your questions and your sincere concern about what's going on in our development. I do want to just address a couple of things that were said earlier. Paula, last, last week when Mr. Valori asked for the list of homeowners, he did direct the question to me. But I have to say, I was surprised that you and Ellen and the mayor already had the information and didn't acknowledge that at that time. Instead, I've spent, you know, the past week spinning my wheels trying to get that information. And I was surprised because in the past, you've been very cooperative with this whole situation. Secondly, you, Mr. Inglesino, did say that the association is not representing the homeowners. And I also want to clarify that Nancy Di Eduardo is not representing me. And in the future, if there's any communication, I do not want it to go through the association or through Nancy, because she keeps changing her mind that she's representing us, she's not. So any communication should come directly to me about my own personal property. In addition to that, when you say that clearly there is no liability on the town, I kind of question the word clearly. That's why we have lawyers and that's why we have court cases, because there's different interpretations of law. That being said, I wonder then, what is the purpose of a town inspection? If they are allowed to inspect or not inspect, or inspect properly or not inspect properly, and there is no liability on the town's part to check on their town employees, how does that square off? And then what is the purpose of a builder paying a permit fee? Because that also pays for an inspector. I wouldn't think that that means that the town is just extorting money from builders for permits and inspections when they don't really have to be done. And so I'm a little confused about that, and I was hoping maybe you could clear that up.
Sure. The purpose of the inspectors is, I think, pretty obvious, as you stated, which is to ensure, or seek to ensure, that the developer has done what the developer is supposed to do. If the developer doesn't do what he's supposed to do, and the inspector, you know, passes an inspection for a permit and does so in a negligent way, then the result of that could be damage to the homeowner. But, and I say this, I mean, clearly, unequivocally, I'm giving a very strong legal opinion that the town is not liable. Why? Because the legislature, municipalities are typically, governmental entities are typically held not liable for their negligence. Why? Because the cost to the taxpayers as a whole could be enormous. And the legislature has decided in the Tort Claims Act, rightly, wrongly, we can agree or disagree, I'm not voicing an opinion on that, I'm just calling balls and strikes. The legislature has decided that municipalities are not liable for the negligence of their inspections. That is the plain language of the statute, and there are court cases who have, court cases that have decided these issues. And they've all come down very, very strong on the side of immunity for municipalities. The legislature didn't make this law up recently. This is a longstanding principle, which is known as sovereign immunity, which goes back as far as our nation's history goes back. And it is a concept that is embedded in common law and was enacted in the Tort Claims Act. I can't recall exactly when, but again, it wasn't recent. And, you know, there's a very strong presumption of immunity for municipalities in multiple instances, and very specifically in this instance. And the statute very specifically addresses negligent inspections, and the court cases deal with factual scenarios very similar to this. So I am very comfortable in opining that the municipality is not liable. If I wasn't comfortable, if I thought it would be a close call, then you would have heard me suggest that we go in the closed session, that I could provide the council with legal advice. But I don't need to do that. I'm very comfortable in saying that the law is clear and the law is well-established in this regard. The inspector who performed these inspections was a long time ago. That person is no longer working for the municipality, so, you know, it's not as though we have a situation where there can be a disciplinary proceeding or anything of that nature. It's an unfortunate situation. I certainly understand it, and I understand the way you feel about it. I would feel the same way. I don't like having to say that, you know, what the law is in the sense that I'm telling you something you probably don't want to hear, but it's not a close call.
Vincent for our 22 Abba Place. I think it was Mr. Vigilante that said that Mr. Mossberg was the builder? Yes, no?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Does he have a moral obligation? I didn't hear one council person ask that question. Not that I'm asking you, I'm just asking questions. I don't have a problem. I don't live where you people live, but I do live in Parsippany. Does anybody ask if Mr. Mossberg has a moral obligation?
I did. I asked if there was a builder remedy.
Okay, and, is there an answer?
Mr. Inglisino could answer you.
Couldn't answer.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, why don't you finish and then I'll...
Okay. Well, I'll hear your answer and then I'll give you my follow-up question. I mean, to what I know, Mr. Inglisino, Mr. Mossberg builds all over Parsippany and every other town. Maybe you should talk to the focus. He likes to report things. I haven't read anything about this particular one in the focus or any other newspaper. Maybe you should take an ad in the Parsippany Life and say, hey, this guy doesn't do the right thing. Maybe don't buy the next house. I'm done.
Yeah, again, it's really not my place to opine as to whether or not there should be any liability on behalf of the builder. That's not an issue. That's for the municipality, and I don't think it's appropriate for me to comment on that.
That's my opinion, ladies and gentlemen. I don't know if he has an obligation. Has anybody called him? Did he give an answer? Yes, no, he doesn't care? What did he say? I haven't heard anything. I heard a lot of people get up, and I heard a lot of people ask, but nobody asked about the builder. He built the house.
Sir, you can't speak again.
As a matter of fact, last council meeting, if you want to go back and review the tape, that did come up in dialogue in regards to the builder being responsible, the town being responsible, what are moral obligations? Matter of fact, Nancy De Guadra was here one day and she...
Yeah, I was here.
Yes. So that was brought up. So you must have had selective listening.
Is anybody going to follow up with the builder? Does he care? Thank you.
You could, if you have a question, you can come up. You have to get up to the mic.
I actually...
Ma'am, just, yeah, we need to sign in.
So yes, I contacted Mr. Ed Mossberg, called him at home.
State your name and address, please.
Oh, Caroline Vigilante. I called Mr. Mossberg. He lives in Union, if anyone likes to know, and he is still alive. He is a wonderful builder who admitted the wrong, who we called personally and said, please come and fix the error because we can't do it. This is not our problem. He got very upset. He didn't want to do it. He sent his son-in-law, Skip, I'm not sure of his last name, but Skip. And Skip Levine came, and he was very not admitted to the problem. One of the water men was there, and he said, well, you know, Skip, you know that this is coming from the house. This is actually from the outside. Skip says, no, I don't know what you're talking about. I said, Skip, maybe I can go to the next door homeowners and find out. I spoke to 110 people, had problems in 2011. Makes me very upset. And to this day, I have the same emotions that I have of seeing our water pressure go round and round crazily as the outside and the inside division underneath the stairs broke. And it was a terrible experience. And just actually, I know the gentleman who is the engineer said, you can't see it. I could see the pressure, and it was going wild. And I said, wow, this is crazy. It sounded like a motorcycle was stuck in our wall. So yes, Mr. Mossberg came with his crew. He said, you can't tell anyone about this. I'm going to patch it, but you don't mention it. I wasn't there, didn't say too much, I just overheard the conversation. He was talking to my husband. They came, they patched it, and that was the end of it. And then Mr. Mossberg actually ran into our sliding glass door and hit his head on the wall really hard, actually on the glass, and left in oil stain. So I thought I served him right.
Oh, Roy, yeah.
I'm Lisbeth Ganehong at 172 Summer Hill Drive. I actually had already replaced my pressure reducer valve, but that was even before I started to see those work. But I couldn't remember anymore the year, but I believe it could be before 2011. But I moved in 2002, so I had it fixed when there was still construction going on. So at that time, when I had it fixed, I didn't know that there was a problem with the water pressure. But the only thing I want to comment was, when you mentioned that the bill for the repair is 3,750, I'm not so sure who the contractor is, but I would like to know. It's like my neighbor had it done, and they spent 5,000, and the one next to it was 7,000.
Yeah.
So probably that money, 3,700, is for like a proactive fixing and not when you already have a problem. And that's it, that's all I want to say.
Ma'am, are you on the list of...
The pressure...
Are you on the list of having problems with your house?
When they did a survey, I answered it, so I don't know if my name would be in there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, but, yeah.
Roy Mesmer, 10 John Moon Drive. I live in Glacier Hills. We have hills, we have rocks, but nothing like these people have, and my heart goes out to them. I could talk for probably 10 hours about this. I remember when I, about 17 years ago, I used to take the baseball team, Parsippany Pirates, and we used to go up Beacon Hill, and we see the trees come down. And then I went over there and I said, whoo, this development's going to be a problem. I should have put it for your eyes only, but who knew? First question I have, Mr. Inglisino, could you give me that statute sovereign report after the meeting? Because I want to read up on that. I'd like to see those court cases. First point I'd like to make here, some of these are bullets, some of these are suggestions. As I sit here tonight, and I've heard this for a couple of times, you spoke very well, sir, over the months, the only place I could think in New Jersey we have similar project to this would be Verden Valley and Hidden Valley up in Sussex County. I think somebody from the administration, because I can't take this on too, or these residents, should call up there and see if those people, those developments, those townhouses up there have had this problem. And maybe if they haven't had the problem, what pipe they used, et cetera, et cetera. Number one. Two, Dow Chemical, you're saying those are the pipe supplier. When he supplied, when the company supplies the pipe, did they supply installation requirements? I've done enough building up and down this east coast. When you buy stuff, it says, boom, 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 boom. Part B to that question. Dow Chemical, if I understood tonight, they analyzed their own pipe? We didn't send it out to a third party? Give me a break. Literally a break. Now, and the next thing is a crime scene, as I'll call it here. We have three police officers up here. There should be a map, it should be pinpointed which homes have these problems, because maybe there's a pattern here. Maybe there's some faulty equipment, installation on one side of the development or on the other side. Whatever I'm up to, four or five. I know it's not that long, but tree roots can cause a problem. Trees probably don't grow that fast up there. Stupid suggestion perhaps, but whatever. But vibration for autos and trucks could cause the pipe to weaken. I said before, the analysis of the failed pipes areas, takes into account doing a crime scene analysis like, and getting a third party, not the company that made the pipes. And again, it was answered before, you know, having Kevin Ryan here, great. Having this engineer here, great. But the building inspector retired? That one building inspector inspected all these homes? The other thing, something's got to change in this town.
30 seconds.
Not just this administration, but past administration. This should have been available, or told that this was available weeks ago, so people could come in, buy it, read it, and then ask intelligent questions. I know, Paula, you wouldn't want your daughters to go into school and get the book that day and the teacher says, you know, going to give you a spot quiz. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you, Roy.
Thank you, Roy.
You know, Roy, I just want to say Dow provided the raw materials, and Dot is the manufacturer of the pipe.
Who did the analysis, Paula? Dow?
Dow. This is at no cost to the township right now, Roy. The analysis...
We're from our attorney, no cost to the town. Paula, I don't care if it's no cost, it's got to be done by a third party. I know the companies that will do it.
Nick Homiak, Lake Hiawatha. When I moved into Hiawatha, I joined the New Jersey Highlands. I became a member. One of their things is to protect water. Fact number one, we live in a buried valley aquifer, the seventh largest in the country. Well, listen, and you'll learn something maybe. Well, don't heckle me when I'm talking.
Okay, do not, from the audience, please do not talk.
It's called unconsolidated soils. And I only have three minutes. Twiddly D and twiddly dumb. Mossberg got his permits to build this from, I guess, the state and the local planning board. Probably should have never been built to begin with. In an unconsolidated soil, you have a lot of sediments, glacier settlements, which makes it an aquifer. So you put a pipe, and then you fill it in, and through time, because of the hydraulics of the soil, those boulders and everything will move toward that space that was opened up and put pressure on that pipe. That has to be a factor. And the other thing, if water is a public trust, which goes all the way back to Roman times, and the local planning board approved this, and the state of New Jersey approved this, and these people are stuck with this, there has to be some liability somewhere, whether it's the state of New Jersey or something. But water belongs to everybody, it's not a private thing. And they wouldn't have water unless somebody approved that plan, Mossberg's plan, to develop that land. Another reason why we should get away and go to regional management planning. We wouldn't be being sued, we wouldn't even have to worry about liability. Everybody would know, everybody bid the best possible things. It's too late for that. But if you just keep on with local planning, things like this are just going to keep on coming and coming. Mr. Inglisino's law firm's going to make money, the taxpayers are going to pay, and before you know it, we're going to have, here, Clifton and Persippany.
30 seconds. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, everyone. I got hollered at and I didn't say a word.
State your name and address, please.
Well, you were looking at me, but that's beside the point. I will look.
Go ahead, all right.
My name is Vinnie Shindell. I live at 3 FX Downey Court.
Mr. Manning, please do not make comments from the audience. If you'd like to speak, come up to the microphone.
This may not help the situation that we're talking about tonight, but I would make a recommendation to the council, the building department, and perhaps come up with an ordinance. We're in the future, we don't have much property left in Parsippany for building, but that in the future, they don't put boulders the size they have in here. Because when my home was built, they dumped boulders like that in my property and all the other properties that they built too. Maybe there is some kind of thing you can come up with, an ordinance of some kind, that the fill or the backfill they use in a home can be more than a foot, rocks or stones or whatever it may be, more than a foot large. Something to that thought. And I'm just thinking of a thing that perhaps what Mr. DePiero had indicated with the pressure things. I was thinking about that when he spoke, and I also believe trying to put lower pressure at the bottom of the hill there and higher pressure on top, that's like getting a half inch water hose running into an inch water hose. All you're going to get is that half inch of water. I don't believe that that's a solution to that problem. The thought is nice, but I don't think it's practical from an engineering standpoint. I could be wrong, but that's my opinion, and I think you sort of considered a couple suggestions I made. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Ada Visseke, and I live at 4 Fox Chase Drive. I feel really sorry for you guys. Been there, done that. Bought a house here 23 years ago. I've been living in Parsippany 23 years ago. We had a builder build our house. He built half of it on Pete Moss. So these pictures look really familiar to me. And what happened was, to us, Mr. Inglisino is perfectly correct, the town is not liable for anything. They, even though the inspector, I guess we've had the same inspector, was supposed to inspect it, didn't, I guess he passed. So then what happened was, we had to go to court. It took us 10 years. We won the case against the builder. Luckily, we, the builder was still in business, and the best, and it took us 10... And the best, and it took us 10 years to win it because lawyers are very good at postponing. So my kids were young, we thought we'd be able to fix the basement, and it ended up that they were almost out of high school by the time this ended. So from my experience, there's a ton of you, it was only one of us, it cost us thousands of dollars, I don't even want to tell you how much it cost us, that maybe as a unit together, aggregately, you could sue the builder, he's still around.
That, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, you can look at that report, sure.
Can we get a copy of it?
Absolutely, you can get a copy.
Okay, so do no one else come forward to entertain a motion to close the public hearing on this matter, this matter only?
Counsel President?
Yes.
We may want to indicate, though, that the report is available to the public. If there aren't enough copies here tonight, and you want a copy, you should follow the Oprah procedure in town. Because that's, that's the way we disseminate public information. And also, if you want a copy of my opinion, you can also Oprah for that, put an Oprah request in for that, and my opinion letter will be made available to you as, as well.
Make a motion to close on this.
Excuse me, Mr. Inglisino, do we have to file the Oprah request? There's so many residents, it's going to.
Let's just, let's, you know what? Let's close the open, the public first. Motion made by Mr. Stanton?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Valori, roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes. Okay, go ahead.
So, Mr. Inglisino, what I'm saying is, there's so many residents that are going to come, it's going to inundate our clerk's office due to Oprah request of these copies. Couldn't we make them readily available to the public?
Yeah, they can. If they want to make, I mean, it's up to you. If you want to make copies in advance and just sort of have them available for people to obtain, if you think there's a lot, they could certainly do that. If you come and there aren't copies available, you can always avail yourselves of the Oprah process in order to get the report and my opinion. I don't know what's available tonight, but if they run out of them, you can do that.
We give that a report without, can we put it online?
You can also put the report online if you want.
Just come by, do it on.
Sorry, basic, very basic.
Do it on the spot. There are forms online if you want to have it filled out and bring it in filled out.
Could we post it online?
No, I'm just saying, why don't we?
Yeah, yes, you can.
Okay, so we post it online, the public can download it, and they don't have to come to Town Hall or do an Oprah request?
Yeah.
Okay, very good, okay.
Okay, at this time, we're going to take a five-minute break.
Make a motion to reconvene into open session.
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. Stanton, seconded by Mr. Paluso, roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Okay, bids to be taken, January 28th, 2015, 10:00 a.m., seal proposals for the improvements of two Lake Precipiny dike number one. January 28th, 2015, at 11:00 a.m., seal proposals for the reconstruction of Reynolds Avenue Phase Two. Requests, quotations, proposals, qualifications, none. Ordinances, second reading and public hearing, none.
Counsel President?
Go ahead.
Before we go to the public hearing, I'd like to make a request. I've seen articles in Focus talking about the cost to our attorney for legal fees for the James Karifi case. And I've had people ask me, is that really how much we paid? And when is this thing going to end? So with the council's permission, I'd like to ask our township attorney to answer those two questions. What did we really pay? And when is this going to end? What is the status of, of this James Karifi issue? Outside, that, whatever you can talk, that's not illegal, that's not... Is that okay with everybody?
That's fine.
I guess there was an article in the Focus that indicated that my firm billed $600,000. We ran the fees based upon the matter numbers going back to the inception of the matter. And the township thus far has paid $225,115 as of December 31st. That's going back to the commencement of the case, which was in October of 2013 is when the case was actually filed. Of course, work was done before that. There were additional fees paid to the township's expert, Aurora, on this matter. And those numbers for, I'm sorry, incurred disbursements totaled $242,524.84. That includes all services rendered by the township's expert, Aurora Information Security and Risk. In terms of the status of the case, and I think it is important to provide the public with the status of the case, there is a significant amount of taxpayer money that has been expended on this case. Unfortunately, there will be the need for more taxpayer money to be expended on this case. I had prepared, back in November, a, a status report. I have updated it, and I would like to provide it. It is entirely appropriate for public consumption, and I'd just like to read it into the record. The purpose of this report is to provide the public with a status report of the pending James Karifi litigation cases. This report is necessary to ensure the public has accurate information regarding these cases in light of inaccurate reporting and misleading information continuously displayed in the public domain. There are two cases involving James Karifi which are currently pending in Superior Court. An administrative hearing has also been noticed. The first case refers to a lawsuit filed by James Karifi against the township of Precipiny Troy Hills back on October 31, 2011. In that case, Mr. Karifi alleges that he should have been promoted to the position of deputy chief. The township had denied, has denied Mr. Karifi's claims on the grounds that he was not eligible to be promoted because he was not on the civil service list of candidates the mayor had to choose from, and because he had not taken the test required to be on that list. Limited discovery in that case has been extended until February 2nd of 2015. It is the township's expectation that this case will be tried or otherwise disposed of in this calendar year, and the township remains confident in its position, in its position. The second case refers to a lawsuit filed by the township against Mr. Karifi on October 2nd, 2013. During the course of the, of Mr. Karifi's litigation against the township, Mr. Karifi, Mr. Karifi produced confidential internal affairs documents which he had in his possession in direct contravention of Attorney General guidelines. Months later, anecdotal reports came to light that Mr. Karifi was improperly using police department computer issued to him for improper purposes. And in light of that, and as a means to implement effective litigation strategy, Aurora was engaged on behalf of the township to conduct an analysis of the contents on the police department computer assigned to Mr. Karifi. Aurora was hired with requisite township authorization, and Aurora had all legal authority required to image the computer hard drive. On or about February 11th of 2013, Aurora obtained the police department computer assigned to Mr. Karifi and promptly began its analysis. On or about March 18th of 2013, Aurora reported evidence of several incidences of workplace misconduct by Mr. Karifi uncovered by its review of the subject hard drive. This information was promptly turned over to the police chief. On March 15th, James Karifi suddenly and unexpectedly gave notice of his retirement from the Precipiny Police Department effective April 1st, 2013. On March 25th, 2013, the police chief instituted an internal affairs investigation against Mr. Karifi. Mr. Karifi was notified of this investigation on March 27, 2013. Unbeknownst to the township at the time of Mr. Karifi's retirement, but since learned during the course of the litigation, Mr. Karifi wrongfully took the entire contents of the hard drive of the township computer assigned to him, as well as a significant amount of data from his network share located on the township server. On or about April 14, 2013, Aurora preserved an image of the police department computer system as of the last day of Mr. Karifi's employment and conducted an analysis of it. Aurora made some startling and alarming discoveries. Aurora reports that beginning on or about March 12, 2013, Mr. Karifi plugged his personal Western Digital external hard drive into his workplace computer. He copied the entire contents of the township computer assigned to him, as well as files from his network share located on the township server to his own personal external hard drive, as well as township-owned flash drives which he sought, sought to retain for his own personal use. On March 29th, 2013, his last day of work for the township, James Karifi completed his download and then deleted and destroyed a staggering amount of information. According to Aurora, and this is uncontroverted by anyone, Mr. Karifi wrongfully took and deleted and destroyed approximately 430 megabytes of township data. He also deleted and destroyed approximately 51,000 emails with over 26,000 attachments. 430 megabytes equates to roughly a million pages of paper. The amount of data that was taken from the township and destroyed from township servers is mind-boggling. It's an enormous amount of data. Mr. Karifi, through his attorney or his experts, has admitted in court papers that he purchased an external hard drive and downloaded the entire contents of his workplace computer to this external hard drive, including internal affairs documents and personal identifying information and other confidential police department data. On October 2nd, 2013, the township was forced to file a lawsuit against James Karifi to compel him to return township data that he downloaded and removed from the police department without authorization.
That's a civil suit?
Yes. That same day, Judge Ramsey entered an order prohibiting Mr. Karifi from accessing, altering, or destroying township data in his possession, and from using, altering, or destroying any electronic device in his possession that he had ever connected to the township's police, police computer system, or that contains township data.
And the civil suit is still ongoing?
In an answer to the township's complaint, Mr. Karifi acknowledged that on his last day of work, that he cleaned out his computer desk by deleting files from his desktop computer, his network share, and his email account. He has also produced, in his defense, a certification from a forensic expert in which the expert confirmed that on March 12, 2013, quote, Captain Karifi copied data from his computer to an external hard drive. To my knowledge, these representations by or on Mr. Karifi's behalf have not been reported by any media outlet to date, but they are on file with the courts. Based on Mr. Karifi's own pleadings, he himself does not dispute what the township alleges, namely that he downloaded and permanently deleted a significant amount of data from the township computer systems. The township's allegations, as substantiated by Aurora's findings, have been proven correct in this regard. Despite these representations, Mr. Karifi has not returned the data that he improperly downloaded. Instead, as I understand it, and as I have read in papers, Mr. Karifi's representative has accused various township officials of conducting a political witch hunt against him, and have taken the position that Mr. Karifi had a right to download and delete these files. In his defense, Mr. Karifi's lawyer argues that because he had the right to access the data, he had the right to permanently delete it. Folks, I guess we should all be bank tellers. Just because one has access to the money, or in this case, the police data, does not mean you can take it and destroy it. In further support of his position, Mr. Karifi wrote in one court pleading that when Sergeant Louis Valori retired from the Internal Affairs section, he deleted and copied files from his desktop computer to an external USB hard drive on his last day of employment. That is written by James Karifi in his third-party complaint. Other than Mr. Valori and one other officer, Mr. Karifi has not named any police officer who, on the eve of his retirement, has downloaded and destroyed data he or she had access to on the police department computer.
Let me finish my question.
Now, on December 6th of 2013, Mr. Karifi and the township entered, this is December 6th of 2013, this is over a year ago.
Mr. Inglisino, if I could just stop for, are you conflicted out of this case as well as I am?
That's where I wanted to go with this. You went on with your little tirade for 10 minutes.
I'm not, I'm not finished, because we're now, we're now at the.
You can, you can read it, but here's what's interesting that I find about this, because, Mr. DePiero, I like this, the theatrics of here, what you read in the Focus, in the comments. I'm glad that Mr. Inglisino wants to talk about, what I love is that you're talking about an internal lawsuit that's going on that's usually always talked about in a, obviously a closed session, okay? And Mr. Inglisino and the mayor have to leave that closed session along with Mr. Stanton and along with, I am not done talking.
Well, I've been, I'm the one who was interrupted.
Listen, we're the council, and I'll let you talk for a second.
Mr. Valori, you're the one who has the conflict, and I'll get back to that, but to the heart of Mr. DePiero's question, on December, on December 6th of 2013.
So you have sensitive items being discussed right now here in open session. So I want you to live with what you're allowing to happen here, because when he gets done reading his pre-prepared speech, which he, I've already read before, which was an open document that was handed out by the clerk, okay? This is fine, we're going to continue on, and then we're going to continue on about money being transferred in a resolution that nobody knew about.
What I was hoping we would, we would come to, at the end, the question I was asked was, how much was this costing the township? Okay, question number one.
That's my biggest issue, it's not about what he's reading, it's about the money.
And question number two is, when was it going, can I finish?
Wait, let him finish, let him finish.
The second part I was hoping we would get to eventually is, when is this going to end?
And those are the two questions you asked, not for a 10-minute dissertation.
But he's reading his speech that he wanted to read three weeks ago.
Right.
So let him read it, on the record.
On December 6th.
I don't think it should be read.
On December.
We're telling him he's in conflict, he wants to read it.
Okay.
Let him read it.
On December 6th of 2013.
Do you want him to continue, Mr. DePiero?
Ethical violations, let him read it.
I don't have an ethical violation.
Oh, yes, you are, you are sued by the third party right now as of December. You are in conflict.
Let's, let's ask Mr. DePiero if you'd like him to continue.
Your point is made, but the question, just skip to the back part. How long is this going to continue? Which was the second part of my question.
There are four, the answer is, I can't give you a definitive date, because as long as Mr.
Are we talking about months? Are we talking about six months? Are we talking another year?
Well, as one person said tonight, you know, lawyers are very good at putting things off. We have four, we have four judgments, four judgments in favor of the township ordering that the township's property be returned to it. This case could come to a very quick conclusion if Mr. Karifi would just simply return that which he is ordered by the court to return to the township. He has refused to do that. That is a fact. There are court order after court order after court order, which I would like to read this because I think people have a right to know. If you don't want the public to know.
Closed session issues, then I'm going to obviously.
If you don't want the public to know, then, then.
You asked for it.
So, I mean, we have.
We're going to go for it.
As of December, as of December of 2013, we, there was a consent order under which Mr. Karifi agreed to deliver all electronic devices in his possession to the court expert for imaging. He hasn't done that. On March 17th in 2014, I mean, I go on and on and on, we have, to cut to the chase.
Please don't.
To cut to the chase. We have numerous orders. He needs to return the information from the township to the township that he's been ordered to return so that the township can get back his property. Now, as far as Paul Karifi's conflict goes, I think that is very apparent because he's James's brother. As far as Mr. Valori's conflict goes, there's no question about a conflict with Mr. Valori. Mr. Valori's been advised of that in, both orally, and he's been advised of that in writing.
And just to let you know, I don't appreciate you with the public talking about matters that are going on, which you're totally. talking about matters that are going on which you're totally delusional about. December, the third-party complaint that I was supposedly naming was dropped. I am not a fact witness which you think that I am. That complaint was dropped. There is no Lou Valori involved in anybody's litigation. You and the mayor and your law firm were being sued as of December.
That's not true.
That's why you shouldn't be discussing this matter. All this matter should be discussed in closed sessions. So, Mr. DePiro, only reason why I was even going to interrupt you, I didn't even want to bring up this litigation that's going on right now. But, Mr. Inglesino, something that he wanted to read three weeks ago, which was then handed out by our clerk, he wanted to do this deceitfully now, but that's fine. Let me get it on the record.
Look, I wasn't sure where we were going with this.
Well, no. Here's the question I have, though.
Wait, I was worried about administrative charges that I recently heard about from you.
Well, Mr...
And I thought that's where we were going.
I mean, we could avoid all the cost and quite frankly, we didn't have to incur these costs if Mr. Carriffy had just returned the information that he's been court ordered to do. I mean, understand, he has personal identifying information about people. Social security numbers, health insurance information. I'm discussing in... I'm discussing information that is...
Where you are in conflict, I'll put it on the record. You are in conflict.
It's in the public record.
You are discussing matters that are a legal issue going on. And, Mr. DePiro, for the record...
This is all in the public record.
Okay, you're done talking. Here's a question I have for the record. Counsel, council president.
Yes.
December, we passed a transfer of money, which is in that article, on a resolution of $225,000. Correct? Mayor, BA down there?
It was $250,000 transfer.
Lou, let's formulate your question.
Okay.
As you say, no drama.
Exactly.
Thank you. Calm down.
We...
No, we're not... This is serious.
We transferred, we approved $250,000 in regards to making a payment for John Inglesino and Aurora.
No, it was not for John Inglesino at all. It was only paid to Aurora.
Okay, so it was only paid for Aurora.
It was not a legal bill.
Okay. Now, that's not what you told me on the phone on Friday. You told me that it was a legal bill, which I have a copy of it, which was paid to John Inglesino.
No, no, no. Here's what I said to you. When I first came here and there was issues about paying this forensic specialist for computers, I eventually, as we were told that some of the bills were coming in, I saw bills to the tune of four... Which I did mention, I said 40, but when I did more research, I found that there were $47,000 worth of bills, which were really incumbent back in March of 2014. 14 or 13?
13.
13 or 14. But anyway, it was before I got here. So, one of the things that I needed to do was to find out that as the administrator and at that time also being the business, not only the business administrator, but acting as the finance director, I went and found out how is it that we are paying this investigatory element, Aurora, through the town attorney? I went and, at that time, both Mr. Inglesino and Justin Marchetta were... They couldn't talk to me, so I met with Dennis Driscoll, who is now in charge of this particular aspect of the case.
So, but he's talking about this matter tonight, though, in the public. He's not supposed to talk about it.
I'm only answering the...
I'm going to go back to you.
Mr. Valori, hold on a second.
No, no, no. I'm having dialogue with the business administrator.
If the judge rules...
You'll have your turn to talk.
Oh, my goodness.
Okay, you go. I just want to know where this money went and how we wind up voted on it. Okay, go on.
Okay, well, that's twofold. I'm going to talk about a litany. First of all, let's just talk about simple documentation. On December 13, there was a transfer resolution of which I was going to talk because I want to have, at each meeting, where necessary, we need to have an administrator's report because there needs to be communication and clear communication. It's a two-way street. I have written, there's emails. I've asked the council president to please, let's sit down, let's talk about each agenda item, have a conversation. I know you guys have a busy schedule. I said, you know, maybe we could try to meet. And this was, you know, this was a while ago because that's how I've always done it as the administrator. So, one of the things I asked in deference to knowing that there was a concern that you had on the phone with me about the transfer, you said, you know, you should have advised us.
Of what we voted on?
Yes.
The transfer.
Right.
I had no clue that we were going to be transferring money from the police budget.
Okay.
Said police salaries.
Police salaries.
It said it in the... On that, if you take a look back at the December 13...
But Ellen...
Wait, can I just... I need to finish because I really did some... We did some real work on this and I really care about this.
Yeah, but I just...
This is a sacred trust to me.
Yeah, but I...
You don't transfer money and you don't put something on an agenda that is public. It was printed, it was public. I don't know if you're going to ask me this question, so what we're doing going forward, so this never happens again...
Well, no, we're going to address this resolution that we passed.
So it never happens again. I have asked the finance officer to put together, which has never been done 30 years here, no business administrator or finance director ever gave you or gave the council a transfer with the explanation. I've never been in a place like that. So I now have asked and directed that it says where it's coming from and it gives an explanation as to where it's going to.
Okay.
Okay.
I have a kind of question.
Yeah, I just want to say something. Are you done?
Just a real question.
No, no.
Mine's two seconds. We've been given transfers of where the money's gone to multiple times.
Not to exactly... Spell it out.
Yes.
Yes, we have.
Ann Cucci advised me that she went and talked to Ruby the past, you know, the finance officer, that basically these were the resolutions that were on the... This is how the resolution is.
But we have had where money's been transferred to.
Okay, Brian, has it been...
Usually from one account to another account.
Yeah. That's always. I'm talking about a clear description as to where it's going and what it's going to.
Okay.
You will always have the right to ask a question on any agenda. The fact that the finance officer was here on December 13th, nobody asked her any?
Okay, here's the issue I have. I've been on the council for over three years. Okay, Mr. DePiro's been here for 30-plus years. Every time we've done a transfer of money for legal matters, it's been transferred from one account into legal.
Okay.
Okay? What was done here...
It was not a legal matter.
What was done here...
It was not a legal matter.
Okay, what was done here, was that voucher made out to Mr. Inglesino's office or to Aurora? Okay, it was out to Mr. Inglesino's office. Now, let me finish.
There is a letter...
That was... Let me...
You can finish, but you have to go to the beginning.
Okay, but I want to...
I checked with Dennis and I said, "Show me the document that allows the attorney to intercede and be..." Because there's information...
Who was the voucher made out to?
The voucher's made out to John Inglesino.
Okay, now, my question is, and I'll ask Mr. DePiro what he thinks. To me, this was done deceitfully because in the past, when money has been transferred, it would be transferred to legal. Then it would be paid from legal. This was transferred from police salary and wages to police operating expenses and then taken out of that budget. Why wasn't it transferred from salary and wages to legal and then paid to Mr. Inglesino's office? It wasn't because if that would have been brought up to the entire council, it would have been questioned on, "Why are we transferring $250,000 into legal?"
Okay, so from the beginning, when I got here, I said, "How is it that you are meeting, I have to pay through the attorney's office for something that's not... That's a separate vendor?" Can we give them the letter that is passed between the mayor?
I asked for the letter and I was basically threatened that I shouldn't have a copy.
Mr. Valori, wait a second.
There is a letter that's...
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Mr. Valori and Mr. Carriffy...
Mr. Inglesino, you shouldn't even be discussing this matter in the public. It really, it appalls me.
Ellen, I would say, my advice is that this discussion ceases.
No, no. What I would like to say is I would like to have Dennis Driscoll give the documentation.
Don't interfere with the meeting.
Mr. Valori, you have a clear conflict of interests.
No. Second question I have for, and I didn't even want to hear this civil matter.
I would direct the administration not to engage in this discussion with Councilman Valori who has a blatant conflict.
Councilman, I apologize for bringing this up.
I have a question in regards to the resolution that was approved without our knowledge. $250,000 was transferred without our knowledge. And here's what's very interesting about it.
Not without your knowledge.
Wow, you voted on it.
Mr. Inglesino wants to make us aware of it. You have money being transferred and there's two individuals that are in conflict on that transfer of money, the funds. You conflict everybody out for whatever reason may be. If they would have known where that money was coming from, they should have been aware that they were in conflict.
Mr. Valori, you've been advised in writing of your conflict.
Mr. Inglesino, I'm advising you that I am not in conflict.
Well, you're wrong.
Now, you're an attorney.
The third-party lawsuit...
There is no third-party complaint.
Are you being sued by Mr. Carriffy?
No.
You're not... You weren't served on a lawsuit.
No, the third-party complaint... If I may finish. The third-party complaint to which you refer was dismissed voluntarily without prejudice. Now, wait a minute.
Yes.
There is a motion pending...
Oh, now you're pleading your technicalities.
No, there is a motion...
Were you standing there and the mayor's in suit?
No, we're not. There is a motion pending before the judge to have the third-party complaint reinstated. That motion has not been heard.
Okay.
And so therefore, therefore, it's dismissed.
Did you read it? Did you read the motion?
There is no pending...
Okay, I just have a question.
He's the... I tell you something, appalling as our attorney. Appalling.
Good, good.
All I wanted to know...
Mr. Mayor, I'm dealing with the township attorney.
Right. I know, and that was your two questions, but, you know, he went on to this other thing. But I'll ask you a question, Mr. DePiro. In the past, am I correct when I've said every time we've done a transfer, it would go to that area? So if...
It would go from one department to another department.
One department to another, right. So you'd never see it go from one police department.
Within a department, they don't need our permission. To change the money to go from one department to another, they need our permission.
And we voted on it.
Yeah, and we voted on it.
Right, but it went from police salary and wages to police operating expenses and it was paid to legal. In the past, or correct, right? You've always seen it go to legal.
It wasn't paid to legal. It was paid to the office of Inglesino, but there is a letter...
It's a legal matter, though, so it's being applied to legal.
It's a legal matter.
No, it's a police matter because it was... The incident happened in the police department.
Absolutely not.
Ann Cucci and Ellen Sandmann, who are business administrator and finance officers in other communities...
Not acceptable.
We have always put the money... You put it in the account where it should be. When you see the document, the letter that has been... We made...
Well, I didn't see the document.
Well, you will see the document. You will see the document.
Okay, so we had an extra $250,000 in the salary and wage budget of the police department to just move over.
Because you didn't hire the police right away and do any promotions, you had money left over. When Mr. Valori said you could have used that to hire three police officers, I would contest to you that you didn't hire them. So the money was spent for something that happened in the course of 2014, so that's why the money was paid in 2014 for the Aurora investigation.
All right, Ellen, we have about $800,000 in overtime from the police department.
Yes.
Okay. That $250,000 could have been used for better use in regards to paying those salaries, okay? So right now, we have $800,000 in overtime. It would have been just nice being very transparent, knowing...
That's what we're going to do going forward because we weren't not transparent. I didn't know you needed the question answered.
We have issues that when we go in closed session, we know that there's members that are obviously conflicted out. So, Mr. Inglesino can't have it both ways. So if he claims that I'm conflicted out, does it make any sense for me to be voting on that item? That's dealing with an issue. That's an issue dealing with a lawsuit or legal pending? So should I have been involved with making that vote then? Absolutely not.
Well, you voted to sue me over the Aurora.
If we... What?
You guys voted to sue me over the Aurora, though.
Mr...
So that's a conflict, right? If this is a conflict, why is not a conflict?
We're talking about a quarter of a million dollars that was transferred without us being aware of why it was transferred.
All right, okay. All right, okay.
Well, I have to comment. What you're saying is...
No.
All right.
Okay, all I'm going to say is that, for the record, I'm going to put documentation together so that I can provide it to the council for clarity.
And here's what I want to do. So we could put everything to bed here, I like to make a motion in front of the council personnel if they want to do it or not. I am not very comfortable in regards to $250,000 being paid. You told me that they're going to be paying $150,000 and then $5,800 payments per month. Then I was told that there's $40,000 that's already paid to him. Then we have this monstrosity of legal bills that John Inglesino himself, that's actually charging town, which probably comes out to $600,000. So I would feel very comfortable that our council, if they want to do what's right, to hire our auditor to audit exactly what was spent on expenditures, deal with the Aurora and deal with Mr. Inglesino because I have no idea where the money's coming from, what utilities, what accounts, and why spending the money on it.
I would absolutely agree with that because Mr. Serenelli and others will tell you that most communities put down on their... Clear where it's coming from and going to. Secondly, they always recommend that you put it into the account where the issue is. And in all sincerity, I had conversations with the finance officer and myself And in all sincerity, I had conversations with the finance officer and myself, as an administrator of forty-some years, and Ann being many years in finance, and we said, going forward, we want to make sure everything that gets charged gets charged to the account where it makes sense to get. The nuance is that there's a uniqueness in this with regard to, because of the sensitivity of the forensic information, it had to be paid through the attorney, and you'll see the letter that will say that.
Okay, but Ellen, what I'm loving about this whole thing here is, there's a quarter of a million dollars, and when I first became a councilman, I was advised that we were at $80,000 with Aurora bills. And what I said on the record also is that, what expense, why are we spending so much money? And granted, I send the record, if that individual did something that was inappropriate, that person will live with their actions, okay? But the reality is, we went from $80,000 to almost $300,000, and I said on the record, why doesn't the prosecutor's office, who has the capabilities, do the same work for us for nothing?
Wait a minute, Mr. Valori. Wait a minute, wait a minute. Mr. Valori, you are...
That's what they don't do. This is a civil matter.
This is an absolute disgrace.
So, but no...
Mr. Valori, the prosecutor's office does not represent the township in a civil litigation.
Secondly, I want to put on the record, on everything that John Inglesino read, he told us a year ago, on the record, to the public, to the paper, when the whole election was going on, that Captain Karifi accessed the server. Not once is he mentioning that the servers were accessed. We're all thinking this is like weekly access.
Mr. Valori, you're entitled to your opinion, not entitled to your facts. No, that's not true.
You are, what you're just doing is, you are making money off this town.
You're lying.
And you're lying because you're not in the council properly.
You're lying.
You're lying.
Nobody said that he accessed the server.
Mr. Valori made a motion.
Said he deleted it from the server.
All right, Mr. Valori made a motion to have the auditor do a report.
I welcome that.
You welcome that? Okay, Mr. Stanton seconded it. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
If it satisfies somebody, fine.
Well, it's answering your question, Mike, where the money's being spent. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely. Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes, absolutely.
Mr. Karifi.
The motion is already passed, but it has the vote, so you can abstain.
I'll abstain.
Good idea.
I have something else that I was gonna bring up. Fortunately, I don't want to start this all over again, but as of December 23, all councilmen, including Mrs. Sandman and Mrs. Cucci, received a letter dated December 23, reference to James Karifi requesting reimbursement of attorney fees and related costs he incurred for a defense of false or fabricated allegations of criminal wrongdoing made against him for alleged acts that he performed while employed at the township employee. I spoke to Mrs. Sandman last council meeting. I thought we were gonna talk about this in closed session, but she said we can talk about this in open session. So I wanted to find out what we're doing with this, because he bases the related cost of reimbursement on Resolution 2013-209, that he's entitled to refund of his legal fees.
My advice is that the matter be discussed in closed session.
And as I said, Mr. Paluso, I did say that there was some confusion between the timing as to when you wanted close, and I was informed by the clerk that we felt that the last time was that we didn't need it, we didn't need to discuss it in close. And I think it was, it's a phraseology. It meant that, you know, we would need to discuss that in close. You know what I'm saying? I meant, what I was saying to you was that, at that point, there was a confusion as to what the timing was when we were supposed to talk about it.
Yeah, because in your email, you said that, you know, you did not need to do this in closed session. And I had asked if you had addressed the matter.
And I said, yeah, and I said, yes, we could either...
As a township attorney, my advice to the council is that the matter be discussed in closed session.
Okay.
How's the other councilman feel about this?
Well, the question I have concerns...
Mr. Valori, you are not eligible to participate in that issue.
I am not in conflict, for the record, Mr. Inglesino.
Mr. Valori, you are. You have a written letter to that effect, and you are.
I am not, that is an opinion letter, and I am not in conflict.
You are impeding the business of this municipality. You are, because...
I am not impeding the business of the municipality. You know what it is? I'm trying to find out exactly where the money was spent and finally getting the truth out of you, Mr. Inglesino, from what you tell us. And I have no confidence in your abilities whatsoever.
Mr. Valori, you are impeding the township's business.
None whatsoever. No, I'm not in conflict.
You are in conflict. The matter should be...
For the record, I'm not in conflict.
Mr. DePiero, can I get some commentary about this? What do we do?
The reason why I also said we should...
If everything's gonna be discussed, the township attorney says it should be in closed session, then I don't know the content completely.
Should be discussed in closed session. Mr. Karifi and Mr. Valori should not participate in the discussion.
Oh, so now, Mr. Stanton should be in there either, or he could be in there now?
Um...
It might be just you and me again.
Yeah, that's what...
And I'm just telling you... No, I think it would be Mr. DePiero and Mr. Paluso.
Yeah.
Did someone order pizza?
Just for the record, Mike DePiero, I'm not in conflict. I will go back in closed session.
Okay, I do have some other business to change into topic. I received an email from one of our residents indicating that there are two committees that are listed that do not exist on our website, which is Stormwater Management and Community Resolution Dispute. Can I get some feedback from administration on that and from council, president?
Well, I'm sorry, Community Resolution Dispute and Stormwater Management?
Stormwater Management Committee and the Community Resolution Dispute Committee.
Stormwater Management is under the jurisdiction of the Township Engineer. He's our expert.
That's what I was told.
He's our expert in stormwater management.
So should these two committees be deleted? Is there anybody on these committees currently? Apparently not, right?
I don't know.
Now, the one who's, our authority is our Township Engineer on Stormwater Management.
That's correct.
Okay, so if I can direct the administration to remove Stormwater Management, then, and I don't know if we need a resolution to dissolve that committee. And the other one is Community Resolution Dispute?
Yeah, before we say we want to remove them, let's review it.
We can review that.
With that dispute one, sometimes they're not used that often, and that's why sometimes they don't seem, they seem to lay for a while. But I've had the dispute one in both Mendham and in Denville, and they do provide a very good service if they're being utilized, but maybe it has fallen, you know, fallen off. But let us verify those two things.
Because we may, rather than remove one of the committees, maybe want to fill these vacant...
Mr. Valori's aware now that he's on the planning board that Gordon Meth fills that capacity at planning board hearings, and he also fills that capacity at the Board of Adjustment meetings. So it's either Gordon Meth or the Township Engineer that are experts certified in that category.
Okay, so if you can get back to us by the next council meeting?
Absolutely.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, at this time, I entertain a motion to open up the public hearing.
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. Paluso. Seconded by Mr. Stanton. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes. Okay, please state your name and address. Sign in. You'll be given five minutes.
Where's the public secretary? Mr. Stanton, talk.
Again, my name is Ada Viszike. I live at Fort Fox Chase Drive, and I normally do not speak on what I see and I hear and so on. But what brought me here is that I see that you're gonna be voting on contracts tonight, and they are a three-year contracts. So I'm speaking about, my background is, I've been doing employee benefits for the past 30 years. I consider my, an expert on it, whether it's private or public, until two years, two and a half years ago, I was broker for Persipony. So here's my concern. And I can't see, so I have to look at my little notes. I work for a company that, it's called Short Partners. We're the 13 largest brokerage firm in the country. We do benefits, property and casualty, private, public, you name it, we do it. So a while back, I'm gonna address two things. A while back, I think it was last year, our benefits department did a survey on how much should be charged for self-insured plans on medical plans, which you guys are. So the rates came in, anywhere's between $8 and $15 per employee per month, depending on the scope of the work. So I did some math. You had 582 employees. At $15, that would be 104,760. That would include medical and prescription, both. At $18 with 582 employees, it would be 125,712. Prescription for the town is separate, and I think, don't hold me to it, it's about 2% of $3 million. I don't know what the premium is now. So that would be another 60, which is a total of $185,000. That is within the ballpark of the comparison with our other competitors, being Willis, Mercer, Brown &amp; Brown, et cetera. And I think I was here when other brokers presented, and they said about $150,000. So currently, I think you're paying $38 per employee per month, which is $265,000, plus $60,000 on prescription. It's 325,000, plus commission on the life, and I don't know about the dental. So that is what it is, as I know what it stands like. And you could check these numbers with other brokers, other large brokers I'm talking about. Top 15, I would say. So what really was a concern of mine is, as I said, I work for the 13th largest brokerage firm in the country, and one of the problems is that a three-year contract, I have not seen that in the past five years. I could count on my hand, in the past 15 years, how many three-year contracts I've seen, which, if you sign that, it'll bring you to year 2018. 2018 is a huge year in the health insurance industry. We can't keep up on a daily basis with all the changes that has happened on health insurance. 2018 is the Cadillac tax, and I could guarantee you that you will be one of the ones that will meet those thresholds of $27,300 for a family and $10,700 for a single. So if you tie yourself to a three-year contract, and you will, that means you can never go to the state. How about if you have a horrendous year, and your claims are extremely high, and the state rates are better? You're gonna come back and say, yeah, what about the union contracts? You can't break union contracts. No, union contracts are negotiated all the time. We live in a totally different world than we did 10, 15, 20 years ago. Bring it a little bit to the private sector. And I want to make a definition of what an RFQ and an RFP is, because it seems that when I come to these meetings, there's always confusion about what RFP and RFQ is. We just provided an RFQ to a public entity of about 2,700 employees. An RFQ is our request for qualifications. They give us a slew of questions. We answer them, and all of them ask how much we're gonna charge for the list of services that we're gonna provide. And we put the cost. We put in $15 per employee because of the scope of service. RFP is a request for a proposal. We go to the carriers. Once you choose one of us, we go to the carrier and get your proposal and get your best prices, and then you choose the carrier that you're gonna go with, whether it be AmeriHealth, Horizon, et cetera. Thank you.
I'd like to clarify one thing.
Thank you.
Very educational, thank you.
If you do choose the broker for three years, you can still go to the state plan.
You have a contract with the broker for three years, and the state does not provide a broker.
We don't have a contract, we don't have a contract for three years with IDA.
Your broker's not IDA, it's Fairview.
No, but he could still go to the...
You can't, no, because you have a contract. I've done this, Jamie, for 30 years. Your contract would be with Fairview, therefore, you can't go to the state because the state doesn't have brokers, does not recognize brokers.
Excuse me, Mrs. Viszike, did you currently bid on the services?
No, I did not. I didn't think I had a chance. I didn't want to waste my time.
Okay, so there's no conflicts that you have?
No.
Still bitter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. How are you?
She didn't put me to sleep. Beverly Casper, 36 Normandy Drive, Persipony. The little old lady is back. And I'm not being sly, darling. When I came here last time, I said, I don't speak for myself. I represent everyone who has a misfortune of having a fire hydrant on their property that they are completely responsible for. Since the last time I came here, there have been three snowstorms. I did two of them. One, I paid a young man because it was so cold and so windy, I paid him 20 bucks. I didn't have to do the fire hydrant at that time. It was just to walk. However, and I did bring my best friend, Mr. Shovel. He's by the front door because snow is predicted for tomorrow. We've had very bad weather. By the way, the young man who came and knocked on my door came from Littleton Road, near Sherbo's, knocking on the doors in Normandy. Isn't it amazing that Normandy kids were not knocking on the door? The situation is still the same. I is the shoveler. I don't like it. I have pictures. Last year, in December, the snow was as high as my waist. Part of it is because, and I've spoken to Greg Snyder about it, is the town didn't plow to the curb, five, six feet out. So in order to do the fire hydrant, I'd have to shovel the street. I refuse to do that, gentlemen. The fine is $1,200 a day. Three of my neighbors didn't shovel their walk last year, were given summonses, went to court. You know what they were fined? $25 each and no court costs. Now, you talk about inequity, that's it. I've listened to the conversation about money. $1,200 a day, court costs becomes 25 for three, and no court costs? That's a question. The situation also is a different problem. I have bone-on-bone arthritis. This is disability. I have arthritic toes. I have found that someone also on Normandy Drive has a back problem. He is out there like me with a... Excuse me.
It's okay.
Now, I have to be a cute little old lady and use proper English. I've been doing that, and I think I told you, I've been doing it for 45 years. Isn't that enough? I also pay money to fire districts. Isn't there some funds so nobody has to shovel, and some good equipment is purchased? We had it years ago. We had equipment that did streets. Access, because you have access for disabled people at the end of some of the streets. They aren't being addressed. And the situation at Normandy and Dunkirk is still bad. I skidded there this morning. You spent a lot of money resurfacing that area, and it's worse than it was last year, and I have photographs of that. There is a new law that's in the hopper that I'm not so sure is gonna be good. It's A3746, which was introduced on September 22, 2014, and referred to the Assembly Human Services Committee, which permits snowplow, which prohibits snowplow operators, be they public or private, from depositing snow in certain areas that provide access points. That means my driveway will not have any street snow if this goes through. I'm not so sure this is going to be a good, a good law. It has problems. But we have to address this situation. I'm old, and I'm gonna say it, I am disabled. I am tired of shoveling that and being responsible for that fire hydrant, as I said before, when everybody around me is getting money refunded on their homeowner's policy for proximity to that fire hydrant, which I suddenly, it's my child.
30 seconds, ma'am.
Please, unless you want to see me, every two weeks, do something about that regulation. Please, it's important not only to me, but every homeowner in this town. I haven't heard anybody in here talk about the whole town. I am. I'm speaking for everybody who has a misfortune of having a fire hydrant on their property, which they're not told they're responsible for when they buy the house. Please, gentlemen and ladies, do something to remedy this situation. I have a terrible burden. When I hear snow, I get petrified. I also don't have the money. I have neighbors who are willing to pay $175, and they paid 100 to have the snow done last Friday. I was out there with Mr. Shovel. He and I have such a compatibility factor, it's ridiculous. But please, address this issue. I've heard you talk about big sums of money.
Okay, ma'am, time is up, ma'am.
Overwhelming amounts of money. This is small. Please, help those of us, especially, I'm 82, and I'm disabled, okay? You saw me. I didn't fall asleep, but I want you to do something about it. Everybody around me is younger than me. They have snow throwers.
Okay, okay, ma'am.
They will do a thing about it. By the way, I have photographs. In fact, one of you...
If you could just give those to the clerk?
They...
If you could give them to the clerk, we can take a look at them if you...
I don't want to give them.
No, we'll give them back to you, so we can look at them.
Want to look at them?
Sure, just give them to the clerk.
Beverly, I just want to say, I've worked, I've had the opportunity to work for this township many years ago, and now again, and the township has always stood by its senior citizens that had difficulty in shoveling out, specifically, when the plows come down the roads, you will always know that there's a natural deposit of snow in front of a driveway, and if you need assistance with your fire hydrant, I'm gonna ask you to call the Mayor's Action Center. Beverly, I'm not too sure if you...
He's gonna come with me.
Yeah. Beverly, Beverly? And you know, I worked for the township many years ago. We always, and it continues today, we've always stood by our residents in need, our seniors, and to call the Mayor's Action Center for help.
I have. I've been in, you know?
And they have, okay...
And they have not shoveled?
Pardon?
Have they helped you?
No.
Usually, the DPW guys will go out after they're done opening the roads to wet to help our seniors.
Even Tommy, it's a picture somebody, last year when that stuff was up to here, you know how much he wanted to do?
You know what, Beverly? I'm gonna give you my card. Why don't you call me? Call me up next time you have a situation.
My point is, something's gotta be done for everybody in town, not just for me.
Yeah, but Beverly, it's to help a senior citizen or someone in need who does not have the ability to remove the snow on their own. This is not an everybody thing.
All right. Go ahead.
Thank you for the cups, by the way. You supplied and purchasing. I believe you bought us cups and purchasing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Beverly.
Thank you.
Yeah, they passed them down, yes.
Jonathan Nelson, two patriots.
My point is, something's got to be done for everybody in town, not just for me.
Yeah, but Beverly, it's to help a senior citizen or someone in need who does not have the ability to remove the snow on their own. This is not an everybody thing.
Go ahead.
Thank you for the cups, by the way. You supplied and purchasing. I believe you bought us cups and purchasing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Beverly.
Thank you.
Yeah, they passed them down, yes.
Jonathan Nelson.
No, I understand what you're saying.
Do I can take it?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, please do.
I'm going to apologize to Mr. DiPiero to begin with, because I'm going to betray a slight confidence of what we said to each other last month at the end of a council meeting. And I said to Mr. DiPiero that I wasn't here to defend James Karifee, and Mr. DiPiero said that he wasn't here to prosecute him. And I think we're both on the same page. We're here just to find the truth. So I'm sorry, Mike, about saying that, but that was pretty poignant, what you said. I never expected on talking publicly about this case, but I want to talk about some of the things that were said here today. The 430 megabytes, not to minimize that, it was 430 megabytes of data, which equates to a million pages of documents. Now, that sounds like a lot, and it very well may be a lot. But I've requested, and I've received Oprah requests from Yancey for videotapes of council meetings, and they're over 800 gigabytes long. That would be the equivalent of 2 million documents. Some of the council members and the mayor and administration may know that I've recently Oprah'd all of Mr. Inglesino's bills from 2010 until through the current date, and that's about 3 gigabytes of documents. That's almost eight times the amount of documents that we're talking about here. Now, last year, Ellen, I don't know if you can give me the answer on this, but last year, we were given, the township paid Aurora or paid Mr. Inglesino's firm about a little under $58,000, a little under $50,000, it was about $48,000.
That's what I said, yeah, about 47 something.
Right. Out of what department, answer me at the end though, but out of what department did that come in, out of? Because I don't believe that was paid out of the police, that was paid out of the legal budget.
And if it was, it was not under my watch.
No, I understand, but I'm just letting you know that it was paid out of the legal budget.
Right, and that was under somebody else's watch and how they do things.
Okay. I don't know if James is guilty. I don't know if he's innocent. But Aurora was paid, or will be paid, almost $270,000. We know that they bill at $200 an hour. Let's just do the math. That's almost 1,400 hours of work. What can they possibly do for 1,400 hours? All right, you want to play semantics? 1,350 hours. I don't, we're all in the wrong business, man, because disk imaging a hard drive, you put it in and you disk image it. What else do you need to do? I just can't see how it can be 1,350, 50 hours worth of time. Now, Mr. Inglesino said tonight, Aurora had the, quote, "the requisite township authorization." The township council, I know for a fact, never authorized Aurora, and we all know that. Now, the authorization came from administration or from Mr. Inglesino. My question is, just, here's a simple question. Does council need to approve a contract with Aurora?
No.
And if not?
No.
Where is it in state statute that provides that council is not...
If I was, had been able to complete the scenario that I was going to do under administrative permission?
Well, I just thought that you were in a thought, so...
Oh, I'm sorry. When that letter can, will be, it's a document. There's a letter and an agreement between the mayor and the attorney's office with regard to this, and we verified it, and we'll have the documentation as far as the statute that allows it. And we've checked with our, Mike Hardy, who's the purchasing agent, that this is one of the exceptions.
Wait, wait, wait.
Am I not correct in saying what I just said?
Wait until he's done to address it.
You know, I'm going to repeat. I'm not here to defend Mr. Karifee, and the council's administration, you know, the council's position is not here to prosecute. I think that the public and everybody just wants to get to the bottom of the truth of this. The council was told, and I'm telling this from firsthand knowledge, that data, emails were deleted off of police servers and deleted and gone forever. And this was in, we were told this in June of 2013. And my question to you is, if this was, we were told this in June of 2013, in January of 2015, what safeguards and procedures and policies have been put in place at the police department to ensure that individual officers, no matter what their rank, cannot access of servers and delete emails forever? Because we were all told that the emails were deleted and gone forever. That we were told that the police servers write over the previous backup every three days, and if things were deleted within three days, they're gone forever. I've been told that. Other members have been told that. Ellen, I believe you have been told that.
Yes. And I met with Aurora today, and we discussed...
I don't care what Aurora says. I had spoken to a retired captain...
No, I'm just saying, I spoke to Aurora today, and they made some recommendations as to what needs to be done there.
The question is, is that true?
And I'm not saying a...
Is that true? Because...
Time's up.
She can answer your question.
I want to know what is what true.
Yeah, I mean, look, the truth...
I just have one more question before, because a little...
Yeah, finish your question.
My last question is...
Even though the time is up.
The last, well...
Just go ask the question.
The last question I have is, Mr. Inglesino stated in his statement that Mr. Karifee downloaded township files onto township-owned flash drives. I don't dispute that. I have no knowledge whether it's true or not. I don't really care. But I do have documentation through Oprah requests and documents provided to others that many police officers have been given township-owned flash drives, and I have the documentation, which I can clearly show you tomorrow, that shows at least 20 officers who are retired who never turn those flash drives in. So that just as a follow-up question, what safeguards have been put in place since this whole case started in February 2013?
Those are good questions, and I hope during the budget process, we have a request from the police department to provide for a more secure computer system at the police headquarters. I cannot be...
We are addressing it.
We have been advised by Aurora that what has occurred here with regard particularly to the storage of the township information on Mr. Karifee's personal computer, which is what he says he's done with it, we don't know because we don't have his computer yet, that's what he says, has compromised the security of the police department computer system. So there is, I don't think so much a policy and procedure question here, because after a thorough review of the policies and procedures, maybe they can always be enhanced, but there are policies and procedures in place that prevent what occurred from occurring. But you have a significant technology issue that needs to be addressed. That's number one. Number two, again, I'm not sure what you meant by the truth. The only issue here is, you know, we need to get the information back. I mean, my job as the township attorney is to safeguard township information and to get it back. And we've had court orders dating back to December of 2013, ordering the township's property to be returned to it. And those court orders have been defied four times. We have four orders to enforce litigants' rights.
Mr. Inglesino, we covered that before. What I was alluding to was, if indeed the server at the police department only saves data for three days and then recycles, there's something wrong.
It's absolutely right, Mike. We discussed that.
What I was discussing is, you know, we need a whole new police computer process if that fact is, you know, if that is fact.
And here's what, you know, I come across a little bit feisty sometimes, but I will tell you for the record, a year ago, first day I was on, we discussed, first thing I asked are, what are the policies and procedures in place in regards to accessing any data, storing any data, folks that retire, on and on and on. We had a budget. We went through a budget where it was very, 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 how could I say, opinionated in regards to hiring more police officers. We discussed equipment. That was never discussed whatsoever to bring that up. Hold on. What I really, really concerned about is, not only on the police department, is what's going on on our financial records? Because those individuals that work in there have access to the world and all our identifiers. So if there's any other breaches like that, and here was another question that I brought up, what if for sake there are 10 individuals like the retired captain? Are we going to spend X amount of millions of dollars on policies that we should be putting in place to make sure it doesn't go on? And you're right. You happen to be at a hearing with obviously James Karifee in regard to his gun permit, okay? I sat there along with you, the focus and everybody else, okay, that sat in the audience, and the chief of police openly admitted that he's deleted, he's downloaded, et cetera, et cetera, which I obviously had dialogue with the mayor about. I have concerns in regards to the chief's behavior, in regards to what he's doing with sensitive information. And his testimony is under sworn test, sworn test testimony in front of Judge Otto. And I have a lot of concern in regards to his behavior in dealing with obviously sensitive information, because he openly admitted that he's deleted emails. So has many others on that police department, and there's no policies in place. So this is, that's something that should have been done over a year ago.
Respectfully, Councilman Florrie, I was, like you said, I was at that, Ellen took off half of my time. I'm sorry. Just to finish up. You know, at that pension hearing, you're right. Chief Phillips also testified that there would be no administrative hearings for Captain Karifee, but whatever. But the question is, again, which nobody can give me an answer, these allegations came in February 2013, what safeguards and procedures have been put in place in almost two years to ensure that nobody can touch sensitive data on the servers? That's it.
Let me ask you a question. I mean, this is a lot of semantics going on here.
That's not semantics. This is...
No, 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 no. Listen, listen. What you've heard, you don't have an issue with somebody defying four court orders?
I do. And I'm not trying, I'm trying to stay away from the, I'm trying to stay away from that issue. I'm saying...
No, that's not opinion. That's not opinion. That's absolute fact.
I'm not talking about the individual case.
All right, okay, all right.
I'm talking about what has the town done since that point?
Okay, your time's up.
To make sure that this doesn't happen again. And I've never gotten an answer when I was on the council and since I've been off. That's a very simple question. And I think Mr. DiPiero, and I think everybody would agree with me on that.
Pat Potatia, 182 Hawkins Avenue. I'm going to sit down. I would bequest not to be cut off if my time overlaps, only because me and everybody else in this audience have been sitting here patiently, waiting to be heard on certain things. First thing I was going to ask about tonight is this thing Mr. DiPiero brought up, whether or not administrative charges were filed against Mr. Karifee, and why they were filed. And let me just reiterate. I was at the November 10 hearing when Chief Phillips was on the stand. Okay, so I attended that court date. Under oath, Chief Phillips, when questioned by Mr. Karifee's attorney, stated that the investigation into James continued after his retirement because they wanted to find out the facts. He was asked whether investigative report was done. He said, yes. And then his lawyer said, and when asked by the attorney, this is the attorney speaking, "But no administrative charges are going to be filed, correct?" Chief Phillips' response was, "No, there are not." No charges to be filed. So again, I'm confused. Chief Phillips, under oath, says, "No administrative charges are going to be filed." What the heck is going on? How can you file administrative charges against a retiree, number one? He's already retired. Leave the man alone. How can Chief Phillips go back on what he testified to? Is this just another add-on, another thing to keep adding on so this legal battle continues? How much is this fiasco going to cost the taxpayers? How much has Mr. Inglesino billed the township to date? The only winner is Mr. Inglesino. This began in 2011. We are now in 2015. Think about how much money has been spent. I think it's about time, and I don't think it was just whoever. I've called it a witch hunt myself. It's got to stop. When I requested, in the middle part of the summer, I think I requested, an Oprah request, on the Aurora billing from 2011 until this past summer, the Aurora billing I got was $46,000. Where the hell did $225,000 all of a sudden appear from? How does that appear within months? I don't understand. I'm really, I'm at a loss here. I am disgusted. I see no reason why. Our mayor, things have been said, things have been proven, lawsuits have been dropped, charges are not being held. Why are we wasting our time? These money transfers, I have been for many years saying, "We have to be transparent in what you are transferring." Why? Because number one, also, we had said this at the beginning of the year, if money was not spent within a timely matter, they were supposed to come back to you and say to you, "We have this money. We have this money." You're supposed to be informing this council of what money is where. They're the ones that have the fiduciary responsibility to this town, and they are being left out and being ignored. And I am tired of it. Salaries, you charge your taxpayers for salaries every damn year, and now you're putting it back in the regular budget, and then you're going to ask us for salary increases again this year? Well, I find that disgusting. I am disgusted. And in case you want to tell me I am wrong in what I am saying, I'm going to tell you here.
That investigation closed up and concluded itself when James Karifee retired.
No, it continued to be pursued.
Chief Phillips. It's Chief Phillips speaking.
No, they're not.
Okay? I Oprah'd everything. I got everything. Please, either get yourselves more informed or drastically, the people, the taxpayers of this community have got to band together and get rid of, rid of stuff that doesn't belong here anymore. Because it is disgusting that we have a township attorney who speaks at any time he wants, which I have been sitting at meetings for you know how many years, and I have never, ever seen a township attorney take over meetings. They are there to explain difficult situations. Ever since this administration became, we have had difficult things to do.
Time's up, Pat.
Difficulty came from within.
Pat, thank you for your time. And I'm very concerned about the testimony that was given that day, too, because it sets a lot of confusion. Gives you better understanding, absolutely.
Being I'm Nicholas Homiak, Lake Hurwatha. Being I'm here and listening to all this, I'm, I can't help my curiosity. What could this data possibly be that could be causing all this? What, what could it possibly be? It, it sounds to me like there's some kind of disparity of treatment. I used to be a union shop steward, and I used to deal with issues of disparity of treatment, and, you know, all of a sudden, somebody rubs somebody the wrong way, and all of a sudden, there's all kinds of actions going on. But I can't fathom what this information could possibly be. You know, maybe the CIA has it, the FBI, I mean, what, how important could this information really be to generate all this financing costs? I really don't get it. I like to have an insight into the, what is, what is this information? Was it the Three Stooges rocket formula that took them to Mars or something? I don't get it.
I can give you a few, for instances, of the types of information that we know has been taken and the types of information that, that we're concerned about. People's identifying information, social security numbers, health records, et cetera. You heard, you remember what happened at Target and Home Depot when people's information was...
Mr. Inglesino, are you talking about an Internal Affairs case?
So you're, so a police department...
AG guidelines.
Is so insecure that it can be breached like a, like a big box store?
What the allegation is, and what we have evidence of, is the fact that, that James Karifee took information that contained internal affairs reports, personal identifying information on other people. We don't know what he has. We don't know what he would intend to do with it. What we do know is, is that is, that is property of the township that should be returned to the township. What we also know is that if he had obided by the court orders and returned the information to the township, this case would have been over a year ago. But because he refuses to turn it over, that's the problem. Now, if somebody's personal information gets out, and that's where it comes from, and they sue this municipality, that's a problem, okay? I'm duty-bound as the township attorney, and Ms. Potatia said, "Do your job." You know what my job is? You know what my job is? My job is to safeguard township property. My job is to get back township property that was wrongfully taken and belongs with the township. My job is to make sure that those court orders are adhered to, and we get our property back. And unfortunately, a lot of taxpayer money is going to be spent, and has been spent, to retrieve that information. We shouldn't have to spend it. You shouldn't have to spend it. And believe me, I don't need the work. I have plenty to do. I'm duty-bound. The mayor is duty-bound. The administration is duty-bound. This council is duty-bound, and it knew it was duty-bound when it voted to proceed with the lawsuit. Because we have an obligation to get back the township's property. And why hasn't that happened? Because Mr. Carifi won't return it. That's why. So this doesn't please me. This process doesn't please me. The amount of time and effort that goes into it is not, you know, something that I look forward to. I don't benefit from it. I want the case out. I want the township's property back. That's what I'm attempting to do. That's my job. And I know I'm to, and listen, I'm gonna take political hits-
Your tone is very bruff towards a resident.
I'm speaking passionately. I'm speaking passionately.
I don't mind his-
Don't, please don't, don't, um-
Speak civil and calm.
Please, please do not mistake my passion for angry Mr. Homiak for what I like and respect.
Yeah, because I'm interpreting this as very angry conversation.
No, no, no. I am, I am passionate. I'm not angry. I'll tell you about it. I am passionate about what I do, and I am very passionate about getting back the township's information here. Okay? And what is frustrating to me is that, you know, the issue becomes about everything else. And it's not. It's about getting the information back. And yes, I bring that passion to my job. I'm proud to bring that passion to my job. I'm not angry. Apologize if it came across that way. But I am passionate. And I want you to know I'm passionate, because you're a taxpayer. And you need to know that the township attorney's doing his job and cares about his job. And that's all this is about.
In all due respects, Mr. Inglesino, there is such a thing as a storm in a teacup, but if he was, if Officer Carifi was doing his duties and responsibilities as a police officer in the reflection of the police department and that data, I'm sure that that same data can be found in other sources.
I wish it could.
I find it hard to believe that it could be so-
It's true.
Nick, what I'm very concerned about, and I'm very passionate about, is being told the truth. Okay? Being told the truth, and I'm not really, trust me, if there's improprieties being done, then so be. You have to live by them, no matter who it is, which I made on record. Okay? But what I'm upset and concerned about is, when we go from $80,000 to $600,000 without the council being notified of the expenses. Okay? That's number one. Number two, now, we all agree that we need to do an audit on, obviously, the expenses of Aurora and Inglesino. But I hate that I have to be so passionate to try to press my point in order to find out, dot your i's and cross your t's, because we have a responsibility as council members and to the public. And thirdly, I was under oppression, and I believe the other council members, when this whole investigation was going on, when it was criminal, okay? Then we found out that, obviously, the prosecutor's office reviewed that information, were reached out to individuals, and they decided that it wasn't criminal. Okay? But what I'm concerned about is, the information that was discussed with myself and my colleagues, I was told that the server was breached. And I'm thinking to myself, "Man, who's that good to breach a server? I mean, to go through firewalls to get to the server, accessing the main hard drive," which we're finding out that didn't happen. So I become very passionate in regards to getting the truth. And to me, the truth hasn't been here entirely. Obviously, we all have our strong differences of opinion, but there's gotta be a point in time where, when are we gonna put other safeguards in place? A year ago, to my colleagues, policies and procedures, not only in the police department, in the finance, in other areas, has anything been brought to our attention in regards to those policies and procedures of what they're doing? No. But what really disturbs me is, a month ago, the chief's a police testimony, when he outright said that he's basically deleted emails, he's downloaded on his hard drive, et cetera, et cetera. So then I said to myself, "Okay, we have the chief of police, who is obviously a department head. So if the department head is not informing his staff what they're doing with their external hard drives, like Mr. Nelson found out, that 20 thumb drives were never returned back to the police department? Or there's people that took their own computers into work? So what are we doing there? What are we safeguarding? What do we know that's out there? Why aren't we pursuing getting that information back?" And that's what I'm just very concerned about, and I'm upset. And the council, which I thought this would have all been discussed in closed session, everything's an open book now, I hope the council really starts scrutinizing where these expenses, and I wanna see that contract as to, if we're gonna move forward, how much more money are we gonna spend on this? And at the end of the day, what are we getting out of this? So I'm very concerned about $600,000 being spent. And Mr. Nelson brought up a great point, 1,400 hours to review information on a hard drive. I find it hard to believe.
And it's a past practice. He wasn't the only individual-
Well, that, just so you understand where there's, just so you understand where the disconnect is.
I missed the Barbaro.
First of all, nobody has said, and Ms. Lori, I apologize if there was a miscommunication, nobody has said that he went through firewalls to go into the server.
Accessing the server.
The allegation is, is that the information, and what Aurora has indicated, is that the information was deleted in a way in which it removed it from the server. Okay? That is what has been alleged. You know, what do you mean when you say delete? You know, you can just hit a delete button, and the information is deleted from the computer and goes, from the screen, and goes into a trash bin. That's not what's being talked about in the context of this case. What's being talked about in the context of this case is deleting the information in a way that removes it from the computer and removes it from the server. That's different from just hitting a delete button.
I don't think we should go any further into it.
No, 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 we're gonna go further.
That's a computer programming problem.
And here's the problem.
All right, sir. Your time's up.
Let me just finish one thing. No. Well, the question I, what I'm concerned about, it's not a question, what I'm concerned about is, I was under oppression from day one that the server was breached. Saying the server's breached, that means you're going through firewalls to get to the-
Nobody said that.
Yes. I will go under oath on that. I'll take a polygraph, where I was told, that the access, they accessed the server. Accessed the server, accessed the server. That went on and on and on. Okay? So I have a major problem on that. Number two, again, you have the chief of police, who admitted under oath in front of a judge, Superior Court Judge, and has the administration approached us as to how we're gonna handle the chief's behavior on this? There's no vendettas here. The reality is, if somebody does something that's inappropriate, then it needs to be, obviously, taken care of. And it's unfortunate that this has to be discussed out in the open, but John Inglesino decided to read off his speech that he wanted to read a month ago. So the reality is, I am not happy at all about behavior, and I'm not happy about $600,000 being spent on this, when the server was not accessed. And one critical point that we learned tonight, too, was that the hard drives have a flaw. Mr. DePiero knows about it now. They only, they only stay for three days, so it overrides itself. I'd like to know who the genius was to buy that system where the server keeps writing over itself. So we have a lot of internal issues that need to be resided. Hopefully, we'll take care of that in the near future and in the budget hearing.
The only conclusion I can come, and my time is up, is that they should just forget about it. It's over. Like, it's a computer problem.
Well, we can- Roy Mesmer, 10 Drumwood Drive. I gotta sign it twice. All right, here comes some questions that, it's been going on for a while, but after I got the whole report that Mr. Inglesino read about half tonight, I got it a couple weeks ago from Yancey, had a chance to see all my notes in here. Aurora, is that a corporation? Is this whole proprietorship? Answer me at the end, please. LLP, whatever, because it doesn't have anything after it. Number two, doesn't this fall under the $17,500, obviously, we're way up above that, state requirement that it goes out for bid if we're bringing somebody in to do this? Number three, what were their qualifications? As Ada mentioned tonight, those two acronyms, first level and then second level. Number four, have detailed invoices been submitted or just one big dollar amount? Five, this is what's confusing me. If somebody broke into my house and took something and admitted that they took it, isn't that a crime? So why aren't either the feds, well, let's start with the county. Why wasn't the county or the feds involved in this prosecution? I mean, we know what would happen with Jobgate, the county got involved, and, you know, it was over. Whether I think they're right or wrong, I'm not gonna get into that. Next thing, did I cover everything? Yeah. So, okay, here's the, I forgot to mention this. Nick mentioned it just before me, but, you know, as a taxpayer, and all of us, if we had a situation, and this administration came in, and if this has been going on for 30 years, it's, it's not Mayor Barbario's fault. However, we found that there's a problem. So what have we done now so this doesn't happen again? That somebody can walk out of there? Because it could be a secretary, too. Or a non-union person could walk out.
Absolutely.
I think, I think the residents of Precipiny deserve a letter put on the website, who we've hired. Because, you know, I think back, and I hate to bring up somebody who's retired, but I always thought Jim Masker was involved in this, you know, he was the IT guy. We have Dave Miller here, an IT guy. I mean, but I hate it as, because, you know, what you guys have with us is a triple net lease, you can just go out and hire people and hire people, because you pass it on to us. In the real world, you can't do that, because you've got competition. Municipalities, the federal government doesn't have competition. So they just keep pushing it on to us. Next thing, this is what I wanted to talk about tonight, I'm probably gonna be out of time. Okay. It was only because of me that we prosecuted, we went after Monafusco. Well, I tell you something. We've all had used cars at one time, and you get to a point, should you put money into a used car, or you just go out and get another used car, or a new car? Well, the Monafusco case, I have the papers in my back there, we're getting $118,000 and some change, $150 a month. The guy's gotta live to 150 years old.
Right.
Now, in order to even to net any money, there's no interest involved in that, which ticks me off, we got charged, and I'm sure Justin did a good job, but there's bills here, everybody under the sun, the Inglesino, blah, 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 I always have trouble in pronouncing your partner's middle, their middle partner, and Taylor, they've charged us $13,000 for this case. Now, I gotta tell you something, ladies and gentlemen, when I brought this up, I thought this crime unit thing, that a guy who lost his son or daughter, and he gets about $110,000 to run for victims of crime, that I thought, we wouldn't have to spend a penny on this. You go to that victim crime thing, and they decide. They handle it. But no. Mr. Inglesino's firm made $13,000. I have the invoices here, the billing. I mean, where does this end? I don't know. Making myself clear, so please comment, do I have time left? Somebody say something to me? Give me a few syllables?
You have 45 seconds left.
All right, okay. Somebody answer me?
Mike, you've been quiet.
I mean, it's absurd. I've deferred to you all night.
I'm tired.
I can say that I, looking up information on Aurora, it's called Aurora Information, Securities and Risk. And it doesn't say, it just says, it doesn't say-
Oh, you have a card there?
I have that.
Because I'll check it out. I mean, is this a company that's reg-
Go on their website. Go on their website.
Well, hold on a second. Okay, what website? Their website?
Yeah, their website.
Everybody's got a website nowadays, except me. Are they a PI company?
No.
Private investigator?
Are they bonded?
Are they? Yeah. I mean, you know, how do we know they haven't done something criminal?
You're talking about people who worked in cyber-
Who hired them? Did you guys approve that bill, that company? Well, you weren't up here a year ago.
No, because-
Well, I know Ellen, you know.
Yeah.
I look at, so somebody, either the mayor or Mr. Inglesino just went out and got this company? They pulled it out of Yelp pages because it starts with an A?
No. No, no, this is the- Mr. Mesmer, this is the same company that represented the township when the sewer department phones were hacked into, and there was over a quarter million dollar charge from AT&amp;T to the township. And Aurora's the one who got to the bottom of it, found out what happened, and convinced AT&amp;T to drop the bill.
All right, but where'd they come from?
These are, these are-
Did you just go to the letter A in the alphabet, in the telephone book?
No, these are, these are people who I was able to come across through my contacts. These are, the principals here are former employees of the federal government, worked for the Secret Service, the cyberterrorism unit, and have tremendous amounts of experience. You should go on their website, you should read the resumes of the principals, I'm not gonna go through that here. Extremely well-qualified.
Everybody here knows, I know Dennis Letts real well. I'll talk to Dennis Letts.
You should do that. I recommend you do that.
I really should talk to him.
Yeah, absolutely. Because they'll say-
You will get, you should talk to him.
I just need to get a copy.
Mr. Mesmer?
I gotta get a copy.
Great question. The only question I have is, they probably are very reputable, but 1,400 hours, if you're that good, it's gonna take 1,400 hours to go through-
You know, Lou, you had recommended that the auditor is gonna, well, what I would like to also suggest, when Ray or someone from his office does this review, that we have a discussion from Aurora describing the kind of work that they do.
Yeah, for 1,400 hours, for a quarter million dollars, I definitely wanna-
I had, I had-
I definitely wanna get to see who's getting paid that well in a year.
Right.
Okay, see no one else come forward? Entertained a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Stanton, seconded by Mr. DePiero. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Carifi.
Yes.
Before we do the consent agenda, there's a resolution 2015-031. I'd like to have a vote. I'd like to make a motion, have a vote.
Which one?
Resolution 2015-031.
May I ask why, councilman?
Yes, because I didn't have all the information on it, and I realized that I did not agree with the terms on it. And also, listening to one of our residents tonight, it confirms my thoughts as well.
Okay, this is for property and casualty insurance? This is not for health medical benefits? This is for general liability? This is for auto pollution?
That's fine.
Property? So this is a very separate issue, and this is absolutely essential, that the township have insurance of this nature.
I understand that.
I'm sorry, what is your concern with property and casualty insurance?
My concern is, I have not seen the RFQs that went out for this.
We have a broker that does that, that puts out an RFP, councilman?
Well-
And this is the recommendation that they gave? No, they do an RFP for us, and they get proposals from companies, insurance servicers, for this insurance. These are the proposals that came in. There were three. Garden State Municipal JIF came in the lowest.
I do not agree with a three-year term.
That is typical of this. This is only concurrent with, not concurrent, it's just what happened. This is a customary, common practice, typical. You do not go out for insurances for one year of this nature. This is a three-year contract. That is how it is done.
That's the JIF.
Yeah, it's the JIF.
This is the JIF.
It's always been three years.
Yeah.
As one of the residents mentioned tonight, and I concur, is that things change by the year.
She wasn't talking about-
Okay, she's talking about health insurance.
Right, whether it's health-
Okay, this is, this is not the case. You know, these folks go out to provide insurance coverage for this municipality on a three-year basis. Now, mind you, they go out every year and seek coverage for this township. It is a working relationship that I explain our needs, and our broker is commissioned to go out and get the best prices for this township. They have done that. If you look at that, the JIF's quote is 65% less than the next bidder, would you like to pay 65% more for this insurance? These are the only people that provided quotes, proposals to this township.
And how much was it for?
It's on the next page.
I can't, I'm trying to follow this, I apologize.
Garden State JIF annual cost is $1,215,628.
Resolution 31.
Okay. And this is a three-year contract?
Yeah, all JIFs are three years.
That's how the JIFs have always been.
It's always been three years.
This is a typical, common insurance practice for property and casualty insurance, this is a state statute?
No, I understand what you're saying, I know Councilman Paluso obviously has concerns about a three-year. Is there a possibility that this could be obviously brought back up next council meeting?
No. Councilman Valori, I'm not too sure where the concern is with adopting a resolution for the township to enter into a contract for property and casualty insurance of which our broker went out and sought proposals. These are the three proposals returned, these are the three companies interested in providing us with insurance.
Okay, no, you're missing my point, I'm just trying to...
No, this is not something I would recommend to go, this is not a year, this is really not a negotiation.
You're missing what I was asking you, I have just concern about Mr. Paluso, so you should be addressing that to Mr. Paluso. I said, I think he's just concerned, but you were addressing it exactly towards me, okay?
Okay, well, I think that's great that you're speaking on behalf of Councilman Paluso, you know what, I have said what I said.
When do the contracts expire for these?
December 30th. We, understand this, we enter into a contract with the JIF, okay? Each year, they go out and they procure insurance for us. The contract is a three-year contract with the Garden State Municipal JIF. The coverages that they get us may change from year to year as a result of them being competitive. If they want our business, they've got to be competitive and prove their worthiness to this township every year.
I'm familiar with insurance companies working with nonprofits, and especially Travers and Zork, and I've always had the option of one, two, and three-year contracts.
Well, this is public entity, you know, you're...
This is part of a joint...
It's a joint insurance, it's not...
So you're telling me every municipality on the JIF is a three-year contract?
Yes.
With these particular companies?
I don't know about this.
No, 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 these companies here, they, if you, if you look, there was supporting documentation, I left with the clerk, and in there will tell you each company and what they provide and what their coverage is for our township.
I emailed it to everyone.
Okay, and who is the broker of record for these as well?
Our broker of record who goes out and does this is our risk manager, did this work for this township?
And who is the risk manager?
Our risk manager's name is Larry Graham from Fairview Insurance Agency.
So it's Fairview, the broker for this JIF?
Okay, he goes out and procures the RFPs for us, and what his due diligence did is he came back with three proposals for the coverage, what they do is...
Okay, so, okay, the question I have for you then is, what percentage is Mr. Graham getting? Is he getting 6% or is he getting 7%?
The risk manager's commission, right, this has nothing to do with this, but he asked, he asked the question. It is a customary, typical, every single risk manager in that JIF's insurance fund receives a 7%, a 7% commission on the JIF fee, so you take 7%.
Okay, hold on, let me finish what I say. Now, I did my due diligence on that, okay, and I didn't realize it was Fairview again, Mr. Graham, and the state normal rate is 6%, not 7%. So is there any reason why he's not doing it for 6%, not 7%?
We're going to get to him later on, this is different than...
But he's, he's getting, he's doing this for 6% of the commission?
This is part of his agreement of 2014, Councilman Valori.
Okay.
He has to go out in 2014 to procure services for this township for 2015, 16, and 17.
Okay, but the state-going rate for brokers to do this is 6%, not 7%?
That is something that I think that we should, and I welcome the opportunity for you to contact me and meet me. I am in this office, I am never absent, I am available at all times, and this question is certainly appropriate, not related to this, I would love to meet with you because you seem to have a lot of questions, and I am open to conversation.
Okay, well, this is kind of going back to Mr. Paluso.
And we are currently going to be putting out an RFQ for our risk manager.
Okay, so, if we...
But if we're putting out, excuse me, Mr. Valori, if we're putting out an RFQ for our risk management, this here is for three years, it goes to 2017.
No, 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 this is with the JIF, this has nothing to do with a risk manager.
This is the actual coverage.
The reason, the reason why Larry gets a commission is because he is to produce this for the township, in addition to advising me on every single thing that goes on in this township that could put this township in any kind of liability situation.
But yet, going forward, he may not be in the next thing, but this, that has nothing to do with this, this is what he did on, in his terms of, this was his current, and then it could be somebody different, but this was something that they secured. Three entities came, gave him quotes, we were going with the best qualified, but it happens to be...
So all I'm asking is that we pull this, if we're discussion until the next...
I'm not too sure why, there is no discussion. We need insurance, these are the, these are the proposals provided, this is the insurance, this is it.
You should be asking the question, is it, if we don't vote on this tonight, have it on the record that you're not going to have insurance, so if you're still going to have insurance, then I don't see why you can't have discussion on it, that would be my question too.
Well, my question was, when does the contracts expire, and I know you'll always continue to have insurance until another insurance company is chosen. They will, they will not, as long as...
December 31st of 2014 is when our membership with the JIF ended.
Right, and if they continue to receive premium, they'll continue to cover you until it's chosen.
What is the, what is the end result? What are you trying to gain by delaying, may I ask that?
What I'm saying is that I am concerned about a three-year contract, and there was no discussion on this, and I'd like to confirm with other municipalities that the JIF is...
This was on the agenda two, a week ago, you know, listen, I'm not going to go back and forth about why people are not calling me, you know, this whole... Councilman Paluso, I find, I think it's great that you want to dig in and learn and understand, but the learning and understanding is not here right now. We had a conversation about this, I can't even believe I'm having this discussion about property and casualty insurance.
You didn't bring enough time.
Okay, the question, I just didn't hear the answer too.
It was not discussed, it was a three-year contract, I didn't receive anything concerning insurance till 4:30 tonight through an email.
No, that was on, that's the health benefit, this has nothing to do with the health...
That's correct, but it's still concerning Fairview, and Fairview does make...
Okay, let me explain to you.
Just having that, Fairview did have the two, who knows going forward if they're going to be the...
If they're not the risk manager, they don't get a commission.
I just had a question. Councilman Paluso had asked, and I know we're going back and forth, you know, all this white...
I don't need you to represent...
No, 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 white noise, my point is, he asked, you said it ended 1231, the contract?
That's right.
Okay, he had asked, well, obviously if the contract expired, are they still going to be held as for this month on a premium? And I didn't hear the answer for that, so I don't think he heard it either. So if, right now, we're January 13th and we still have insurance, so we didn't vote on it because 1231 expired, so what is, does another couple weeks go by where the final vote, you know, gets tallied up? Because if we didn't have the meeting tonight, our next meeting wouldn't be until February. So I just think the question that should be answered to Councilman Paluso is that right now, are they kind of a holdover right now, being paid?
Councilman Valori, I would not allow this township to go without insurance coverage because the council has the inability to make a decision. Yes, we do have property and casualty insurance, I asked a question, why is this being delayed?
Okay, but I'm just only following up what he's asking, is that he asked, that he wanted to review it, he asked you in regards to, no, don't...
No, no, I'm not interrupting you, Councilman.
I just, so we understand what's going on, so even though it's not voted on yet, we still have insurance.
You have insurance, and again, Mr. Paluso, Councilman Paluso, Valori, every councilman on this board, I am here, I am open, yes, you're hearing frustration because I have never gotten one phone call from any of you since you have set foot in this seat up here, never once has anyone reached out. Councilman Karifi asked me a question, he is the only one, of course, Michael, Councilman DePiero, has reached out.
So I never asked you, I've never called you about the sewer utility of...
You have never dialed my personal phone number since you have been here.
Okay, put it to vote, put it to vote.
So what I'm asking for is a motion to remove it from the consent agenda.
What, about a phone, you want to put a phone call to vote? What are you putting to vote?
Remove Resolution 2015-031 for the next council meeting.
I'll second it.
Yeah, leave it go. Here we go.
Roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
No.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
No.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
So the motion was to remove until the February regular meeting?
Correct.
I'll make it clear for the record that I voted yes because you stated we still have the insurance.
That was my understanding also.
Consent agenda, be resolved, all items listed within asterisk are considered to be routine, non-controversial by the Township Council, be approved by one motion, there'll be no separate discussion on these items unless the council members have requests, which case the item be removed from consent agenda considering its normal sequence on the agenda.
Motion made by Mr. Stanton.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. DePiero, roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Ordinance for introduction?
Okay, ordinance is for introduction, Mr. DePiero.
Ordinance 2015, call in 01, an ordinance amending chapter 169, fire prevention of revised general ordinances of the township of Precipiny Troy Hills requiring red lights to designate all fire department connections. We had resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on first reading at a meeting of the Township Council of the Township of Precipiny Troy Hills, held on January 13, 2015, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on February 24, 2014, at 7:30 pream prevailing time, but soon thereafter, as a matter may be reached at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. We had further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction there being published in the official newspaper according to law. Motion to approve above resolution.
Motion made by Mr. DePiero, seconded by Mr. Paluso, roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Order 2015-037, resolution Township Council of Township Precipiny Troy Hills authorize an execution of a contract with Fairview Insurance Agency Associates Incorporated for health insurance broker of record services.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Stanton, seconded by Mr. DePiero, roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
No.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
No.
Mr. Karifi?
No.
Okay, if I may...
I wouldn't, okay, go ahead. I wouldn't have waited to the vote.
Yeah, I wish you guys didn't vote, but it's okay, you know, I worked out, I worked very diligent on this with Fairview, and that we're going to save the township approximately $150,000 in three years by reducing their rate, but, like, we'll go, I from here, so...
We can do better.
So, so just be, just for one year?
Let me go, next one, resolution?
Okay.
Resolution 2015-038, resolution of the Township Council of the Township Precipiny Troy Hills confirming the appointment of Kevin Brancato to the Noel Country Club Golf Advisory Committee.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Valori, seconded by Mr. Paluso, roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Will we enclose it?
Oh, I'm sorry. Resolution 2015-039, resolution of the Township Council of the Township of Precipiny Troy Hills awarding a contract to Easy Go Division of Textron Inc. for alternate bid item 1A for new gas-powered golf carts with roofs. Motion to approve the above resolution.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. DePiero, seconded by Mr. Stanton, roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Before I vote, I just want to say that at one time, we did have electric-powered golf carts, which are more environmentally friendly, less emissions, and there's some concerns in which I addressed it with our business administrator today. I was not aware of all the information until today, and I have to vote now.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
It's okay.
Mr. Valori?
No.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
It's done, it's done, it's passed, three to two, it's okay, it's okay.
Okay, applications?
What was that?
Applications?
I just, I was just addressing one of our admin personnel over there.
I wasn't speaking into the microphone, Councilman.
It's okay. Okay, what was that now?
Applications, Mr. Paluso.
Application for permit to discharge firearms per chapter 162.
I'm sorry, this isn't a resolution, it's just a motion for now?
Oh, okay.
And if you notice, I put motion to blank, it's up to you whether you want to approve it or reject it, if you want an explanation on it first, or...
No, we haven't. You have a complaint from the chief, the chief gives a recommendation, but the council has the power.
And the chief has recommended that it be denied?
The chief recommended it be denied, I think it's too close to residential home.
Common sense, yeah.
Mr. Inglosino, I don't know what happened, about 20 years ago, I helped initiate this firearm discharge permit ordinance, this is not the one I initiated, the one I initiated had distance restrictions, 1,000 yards from homes, 1,000 yards from schools.
Yeah, just more detail.
It had, it had a lot of restrictions in it, you know, that specifically said you cannot even apply, the lot had to be a minimum of five acres, what happened to my, what happened to my ordinance?
I'll have to check it out.
What the heck is this one, it doesn't have anything in it?
I'll have to check it out, I don't know.
Say what's lost on your computer.
Add that to the list.
So, are we going to vote on it?
Yeah, we, well, we have to...
Somebody has to make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I make a motion to deny.
Okay.
Okay, I'll second. I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. DePiero, seconded by Mr. Stanton, roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Before I vote, shouldn't we read the, say, an application for permit?
I think it's out in the, in the, was that the Packet Mayor?
Because I didn't finish reading it.
Okay, yeah.
Not a resolution.
Not a resolution, so, it's okay then. Okay, I vote no.
Mr. Stanton?
Wait a minute, yes means we're denying.
Yeah, my motion was to deny.
I retract that, a yes to deny.
That's why you had to hear that, yeah.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?